Next up is public comment. Please wait for three minutes. First person to public comment is Asa Davis.
Okay, so Cal, I got you a boba tea. That's what those are right there.
I'm sorry, they're what?
They're boba tea.
Thank you.
You had me worried when you forgot about that discussing the gentleman's permit for the very next day. But your performance at the C D A meeting showed you that you can still be sharp when you want to be. On that subject, I'm an honest man. When I make a mistake, I fess up and apologize. So I do owe Cal an apology from last month when I said the D E M already met with us and been on site four times. Because I forget about the meeting with Manny, so it's actually been five times, not four. That was clear from this 2020 article. The same meeting where Steve Matczek pulled the D E M trust deed made him put the buildings in the wetlands. So that's where the council. Regarding open meetings, there's no prohibition on talking. So forty-two dash forty-six dash six D says, nothing within this chapter shall prohibit any public body or the members thereof from responding to comments initiated by a member of the public during a properly noticed open forum, even if the subject matter of the citizens' comments and discussions were not previously posted. So you don't have to be quiet if I'm talking or anybody else is talking. You can ask questions, you can respond, you can comment. I was encouraged to see last meeting where you took the garage D E M violations into executive session. Cal's letter, not Dan's letter, says we're going to fix these things. The list included illegal buildings. If we don't intend to do that, and we still don't have an estimated cost on it, and that's called bargaining in bad faith. At the very least, we should ask them for another extension before the October clock runs out, because then they can start imposing fines. In other legal news, by last month's court order, I'm not allowed, or people associated with me are no longer allowed to use the right-of-way at the end of the state drive, but other people can. These photos, I want to turn to. These photos all show members of the public using that right-of-way after that order went into effect. Dirt bikers, trailer owners, dog walkers. At the same time, Mark Iannacelli is shown on my property trespassing under a no trespassing sign. And I believe he's also on the Cal side in one of the legal complaints. You need to stop this, because that's selective enforcement. Mark Iannacelli is also using that right-of-way for his yard degree again. Somebody is again using my machines for target practice with their golf balls from the backyard. This has to stop. These are not authorized activities. So you know what is a danger to the public, and I am a member of the public, is forcing me and people associated with me to trek long distances over raw terrain while others get to continue using the driveway that I made from the state. We need to fix this.
Next is Joe Truchet.
Joe Truchet, yes. If I'm speaking out of turn, I'm new to the Thompson, please let me know. I attended the last meeting relative to the Schottner project. And I think everybody would agree it was a difficult meeting at best, with one party being totally unprepared, as they announced at the beginning of the meeting. We have another meeting coming up on the twenty-second, I believe, of September. And I'm wondering what's being done to put plans in place so that that meeting can be run smoothly on the part of everybody. For example, it's my understanding that a number of experts, I think it was quoted at the other, at the last meeting, five to seven or so, might be coming in and presenting. And I don't know what that means. Does that mean they're going to be talking to the town council? They're going to be talking to the entire audience? Are the materials that are going to be distributed? Are they going to use any display type capabilities, like up on screens or whatever? And what equipment is going to be used? Are they going to be becoming self-contained, bringing all of their own equipment? Or is it they expecting that the town is going to be providing stuff? I noticed there's a screen in the cafeteria at the school, and I don't know if there's projection equipment there and so forth. But it lets some of these assumptions work out ahead of time. That meeting at best will have a very rocky start, because nobody, either side, will be prepared. And fill this communication between the two parties to know that here's what the assumptions are, here's what we're planning on doing, here's how it's going to work, here's the equipment we need, or here's the equipment we're bringing. How does it connect? Does it work? Has it been tested? And if not, we're going to have an awful rocky start for the next meeting, just like we had for the last one. Thank you.
And last, the public comment, Ted Natale.
Yes, I find this whole thing relevant to the comprehensive plan very confusing. As we all know, the comprehensive plan came into effect in about 2002. After ten years, it needs to be redone, and it hasn't been redone. And every time I question anything about it, I get no answers whatsoever. I questioned it again at the last meeting of the planning board, and I asked the question why it was the planning board did not push after a year, after two years, after three years, after four years? Why it was that they did not step up and say something needed to be done? I was informed by Scott Maloff, who is acting as the president or chairman of that council at this time, that it wasn't the responsibility of the planning board, but rather it was the responsibility of the town council to be monitoring all of this. And then his response was, it's nothing but water over the dam. Well, it's not water over the dam. Somebody fell out on this thing, whether it was the town council, whether it was the planning board, or somebody. So now, all of a sudden, we have a planning board who thinks they control the town, and their response is to everything is, that doesn't apply to the comprehensive plan. That doesn't apply to the comprehensive plan. Now, I'm not talking about Schottner, I'm not talking about Green, and I'm not talking about this place down the street here. I'm talking about the whole entire thing. Now, what they have decided is, they're going to pick and choose which of the elements they want to apply to. So they kind of liked the one across the transfer station. So now they want to amend the comprehensive plan to meet what they want. Now, in a course of articles that have been written recently about, if I go over, tell me, about Schottner Farm, Frankie Degorio comes out and says that the Schottner is trying to take advantage of the town because the zoning laws are outdated. Well, the comprehensive plan is outdated. And according to the state of Rhode Island, the comprehensive plan now is in kind of like in limbo. It can be interpreted by the planning board, it can be interpreted by the town council, it can be interpreted by me. And I think it's about time that the town council needs to step up and say, enough of this planning board. You cannot interpret that thing the way you want it to do. You have to interpret it the way the town wants to do it. They have been running amok. It's my belief, and I say this all the time when I say this, it's my belief that the planning board has purposely done this by putting that lady in there and letting her go, go, go. And every time I have questioned everything, she was too busy, she was, I don't know. I asked about her hours, I was told she could put down the hours that she wanted. That was none of my business, because it was covered by the federal law, not the state law, which actually controls it. And we're in a situation where they're doing whatever they want to do. And whose responsibility is it to turn around and say, okay, we want this, but we don't want that? We want this, but we don't want that? And try to change the comprehensive plan? They should be stopped. They should be run dead on their feet and said to them, why didn't they come in and recommend that something happened? Why did past town councils support her so vigorously? To the extent, and I'm going to repeat this, and I repeat it, and I repeat it. Frankie Degorio, in two years ago, three years ago, the people of Exeter said, this woman is incompetent. She deserves nothing. However, at the year that we could not vote, Frankie Degorio and the past town council gave her a five percent raise, a five percent raise. After which, she turned around and told the town, F you, I'm leaving. Well, what was going on with all these people? Why isn't somebody being investigated? Why isn't there something when Calvin would turn around and say, hey, she's working real hard. We don't know how many hours she's working, but she's doing a great job. Well, she didn't do a great job. She screwed us really badly. And the planning board is using that to do what they want to do. They should be stopped. I finish.
Okay, next up is acknowledgements and announcements. The first one, it's not on here, again, it's got it right on there. Transfer station permits are now available for October first, 2021, to September thirty of 2022. They can be purchased at the town clerk's office during regular business hours, Monday to Friday, nine to four, by dropping off copies of registration and payment to Dropbox at the town hall and online on the town's website. For more details, visit the transfer station page on the town's website. Number two.
Mr. President, if I may, I wanted to bring up, and I'm regarding the transfer station and that issue that didn't make an on the agenda. So at the spectrum purview of the council, we can discuss it under new business or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Probably other state issues, maybe.
All right.
All right, next up, a couple of weeks ago here, Exeter's oldest resident, George Reynolds, who is ninety-nine years old. We had a small ceremony here on the eighteenth and presented Mr. Reynolds with the Boston cane, which is, I don't have that picture of it. Is that here with that, give it this nineteen-year-old face? Oh, there we go. The Boston Post did this back in the early nineteen hundreds. As a publicity stunt, handed out over seven hundred of them throughout their program. You don't believe Exeter, because it's one of the only towns left that has this cane.
Actually, a fun fact, I just did a survey of all the thirty-nine cities and towns, and only like nine of them came back that they still had a cane.
But they don't give it out.
Some might give it out with a replica like we do, but only nine out of the thirty.
So anyway, we still have it, and Mr. Reynolds is in possession of the cane right now, so. Also under acknowledgements and announcements, September eleventh, two thousand, September eleventh, 2021, commemoration and remembrance ceremony, wall of honor at Rhode Island Veterans Memorial Cemetery here in Exeter. Saturday, September eleventh, 2021, at nine o'clock there is a ceremony. And I don't work Saturday, Mike will be taking my place there. Anything to add, or?
No.
Okay, so. Anybody else got any acknowledgements, third announcements? Okay, next up is approval of the agenda order.
I made a motion to approve the agenda order as is.
Okay.
Need one of us.
Okay.
Dan Bates.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda. I need to pull the Public Works report. Anybody else need to pull the report?
Dan, number eleven, Social Services Department.
Do you want to pull the transfer station?
Yeah, we can do that. Pull the transfer station as well, to affect, right?
Okay. Sounds good.
There were no Reynolds.
That's it?
No Reynolds.
That's it? Let's see, we got the rule of eight, plus five, the agenda, correct? Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Completely, we have next page.
Communications, I'm sorry, Cal.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Cal.
No, no, the only one I would remove is one we're going to address, and that's an appointment issue, that's number nine.
Okay, that's the one, that's the one I had. You got anything, Frank?
Well, I wanted to, to, um, pull the issue that has happened down at the Petson Cemetery that I'm just going to attend to. So we can.
Number eleven, pull it.
Yeah, yeah.
Got any questions?
One and nine.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Well, just, Dan, just a question, I think, was anyone present for August?
Number six and seven should have been August sixteenth, not August twenty-third.
Number six, I know you sent us an email. It's what date?
August sixteenth, not August twenty-third.
And what was the last one? Seven.
Is it sixteenth also?
But also sixteen.
Motion to approve the minutes, as they are?
Sorry, as amended, yeah. I'll second, Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bring this up to vacancies, personnel board members. Okay, conservation commission. Any reservations this month? A witness, juvenile hearing board members, two needed for three-year term beginning dated appointment, and one is also needed for an unexpired term ending March fourth, 2022. So we have three vacancies on that board. Anybody knows, anybody looking to help out with the term at Exeter? Still got something there. And next up is Board of Campuses, alternate member.
Keep reaching out, but.
Okay. Number three, Department of Public Works workers, two needed. Steve, was Stephen back there?
Yep. I put in two papers for you earlier this evening. You should have two of them.
Well, for discussion for sure, Dan, we have recommendations here dated September seventh. So I would move that we hire, go for the Exeter resident, Austin Lyles, to go out and make a contribution based on a recommendation of our D P W director.
I only have one thing to add, Steve. Now, when we get these, can you forward these resumes to us?
Sure.
That's what I'd really like to see.
There's two of them, actually.
I know, there's two here.
So I make a motion to also hire Timothy Gregson.
Yeah. I gave you a brief description of what basically is in their resumes.
I just made a motion for one, I thought we could follow up, but there was a second to mine, but.
Second. Okay, so we'll do.
My motion was Mr. Lyles, I forgot Stephen Jones Street.
Well, he has both licenses the towns require at this time, which is, he has an A C D L and a hoisting engine license, so it covers all the equipment and trucks. He's been working for the town part-time, a little over two years as a filling employee. So he's familiar with the employees, the town layout, the operations, snow removal.
Okay, so we're going to take them one at a time. The first one was a motion by Calvin to Austin Lyles, if there's a second, then. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then you did a motion for the second, Timothy Gregson. Was there a second on that one?
Well, I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion on Timothy Gregson? All in favor? Go ahead, Cal.
Well, I just know, you know, Steve has indicated, so the public understands that there were requirements for licenses. And Steve has spoken to that, and both of these gentlemen have a C D L license that they need. And this particular applicant also has limited R I C license. And Steve goes on to speak, actually, he did it the first time, and I put it to motion. He has experience with plowing, landscaping, mechanical experience. I don't know if that's true of the other, but I think it's worth noting, and the public should know, go on and cannibal appears. Correctly, if I'm wrong, I done by all of you at House, which over, over time is a real savings to the town. When you explained that before, am I right?
Yes, and he's also graduated from New England Tech's automotive program.
I think, but.
That individual has graduated from New England Tech's automotive program as well.
Has other experience with forklift load, or, I mean, these things are all a choice of Steve, because he keeps his loads free. Anyway, so I think we should.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is Elections Administrator slash Court. And you want to speak to that, Lynn?
Yeah, we advertised this in all ways. We also put on the N D. Once we received everything, we went through it. Maria, the treasurer, and Mary B. Hall, are shared with the Board of Campuses, because they're going to be, this position is to be shared from those two offices. So we called a few people, they had already taken jobs, were no longer interested, and we called back. So we had two we interviewed, and we gave you the names of those two people. They were both highly qualified and both personally. Those would be our two choices out of all the resumes we're using.
And it is by time, so we have to, you know, optimize the salary, which probably what was.
But it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday hours.
Okay. That probably discouraged some applicants who thought it might have been a little bit minor paying position. Things to do with that screening, when, of this.
I'm open to a motion. I make a motion to hire Elaine Capozzi for that position.
That's just for discussion? Any other discussion, or?
Well, I looked at two resumes, and I know that one of them is Stephon's wife, and that looked good. And Elaine's resume just popped out, I mean, she's very qualified, very well-written resume, a lot of experience. I find it hard to look past her.
No, I understand, I agree with my, it seems like she does, I hope she isn't really overqualified. She seems like she has an offer, she's cool offer. That would be, you know, just a concern, but it doesn't mean. You know, the other applicant also makes, is the really reasonable one as well, like.
Okay, Frank, anything?
What comments?
Okay.
I agree with Mike's meaning.
All right, all in favor of Mike's motion? Aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay, next up, zoning. There's only the one unexpired term ending July one, 2024. We've only had one applicant for that, Warren Andrews, so we have a road. And take a motion there. Obviously, that's Frank.
Did you say you were looking for a motion, but that was a day?
Yeah, yeah, Frank would look at it quickly.
Well, you know, I would certainly move to appoint Mr. Andrews. And then, if we need to, there's a second, we ought to hold on it.
I'll second that.
Okay. I just, I know here, he's, I think he's a lifelong resident, and I know he's at that other end of, that other end of town that doesn't always get a lot of representation, so it might be a good idea.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. D, spiring curves, anything coming up, Lynn? Okay, let's move on to public hearings. The first one is an outdoor entertainment license application, Amy Almeida, on behalf of the firm of Exeter Animals, thirty-three Winden Lane, West Burnet, Rhode Island, applicant to hold a classic car show, including craft and food vendors, Saturday, September eleventh, 2021. Rain date, Sunday, September twelfth, 2021. Ten a.m. to three p.m. at the Exeter Animal Shelter, one sixty-nine South County Trail, Exeter, Rhode Island. And I need a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is Amy Almeida here? No.
No, she's not yet. I'm the president of Friends of Exeter Animals, and we hope to see everybody at the car show. Got tent, car show there, and it's a lot of fun. And maybe after the ceremony, they can stop by and have something to eat, see the cars. It's always a great turnout. Last year, I think it was close to like a hundred cars, because there was no car shows, and then we had that. So, and all the money we make goes right back into the town, so. We hope everyone can stop by and see how good of a car show it is.
Thank you. Anybody else got any comments?
Forecast looks good, so that's good.
Yeah.
Mike, want to go over the little lines after?
Oh, I like that.
Okay.
I'll just make a comment for the record. It's commendable that these folks continue to put that effort out there. I know I've attended a couple of times. It's expansive, and people seem to really enjoy it, and it's a great initiative. And I believe, when you spoke about the money going back into the town, I assume you mean directly to the animal shelter.
To the animal world.
Support.
Yeah, we support, we help vet bills, cat food.
Thank you, I just didn't want the public to think that you're handing it over to my general.
Yeah, no, it goes, we pay for vet bills and stuff that the town's not.
I just wanted to make that point clear to those of us that were here. Because you know Maria, it says a handout. Anyway, very, very commendable. Thank you, good luck. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess the motion, close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the motion, where will we go?
I could actually say that there's a hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty cents owing the advertising authority. And they asked for a waiver of the application fee.
Okay, quickly, where will we go with the application fee? If I do go back, so. Okay, so I need, Cal, you'd be good with this motion, you've got it before.
A motion to approve the application?
Why does the?
Well, yeah, I would say, including forgiveness of the ordinary fees required.
Not the advertising.
The advertising fees required for the approval of the, the application.
They asked for forgiveness for the application fee.
Oh, and the application fee.
No, not the advertising, not the advertising.
Don't you need to do that, or you don't do that?
They, they asked for forgiveness for the application fee, but we paid out the certified mailing and advertising. We usually get reimbursed, but if.
Well, what's the amount, what's the amount that we?
Hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-four cents of the certified mailing and advertising. Hundred dollars is the application.
So that would be two hundred and fifty-two. I would, I would suggest that we forgive all of that.
Okay.
So that would be quite my motion.
Okay, I'll second the discussion. Any other discussion?
Well, gee, I don't know if we should, they should, I think they should pay for the advertising, in my opinion.
Well, that's what we've gotten in the past, so.
Waive the application fee.
Okay, yeah. So we need to vote on the motion. Okay, vote on the motion, ask Cal, put it through, all in favor?
Aye for me.
Okay, nay, nay?
Nay.
Okay, now we need to do motions.
I made a motion to waive the application fee and approve with the one fifty-two advertising.
I'll second the discussion, okay, yeah. Any other discussion on that motion?
Sure, just make sure you send a lot more raffle tickets and stuff, because you know, it's a, it's keep selling those tickets.
All right, all in favor of the new motion? Aye.
Aye.
Both, okay. All right, next up, a couple of hearings. Outdoor entertainment license application, Anthony Gammam, one oh six, Ten Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, applicant, to hold drive-through holiday displays on his property, as follows, in memory of his mother to the Gloria Gammam Breast Cancer Foundation. Halloween, October first through October thirty of 2021, ten a.m. to nine p.m. And October thirty-first, 2021, ten a.m. through twelve a.m. And Christmas, November twenty-fifth, 2021, through January second, 2022, ten a.m. to nine p.m. Traffic details will be hired for Friday and Saturday nights for the Christmas display and will be assessed and adjusted week to week as necessary. Police vehicles will be hired for the Halloween display if necessary. I need a motion to open the public hearing. Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is Mr. Gammam here?
He is not. My name is Brian Sawyer, Chief of Operations for the Gloria Gemma Foundation. Mr. Gemma was married on Saturday with his wife Helen, so they are off in Florida on their honeymoon, so they apologize for that. It's Brian M. Sawyer, Chief of. It's Brian M. Sawyer, Chief of Operations for the Gloria Gemma Foundation. And this is a holiday display, which started out as a, a Christmas display with, with funds going back to the Gloria Gemma Foundation, raised about $50,000 for us last year. And this year, he's expanding it, hoping that, that the, the Halloween display will also match what the Christmas display did. We worked out some of those traffic problems that, that happened right at the start, and that's why we have the details in here. And of course, we'll look at the Halloween to see how that goes.
Now, last year, when they did, were they starting this evening in the day at 10:00 a.m.?
They were, they were. So it was a lot of mothers with children coming out of school and preschool and whatnot that, that would stop, and it wasn't a very heavily attended piece until the evening hours.
I've had some residents call me about, about the traffic from last year. Probably need to work something out.
And, and he, he was very happy to, to talk about whatever hours need to be extended.
Sorry, let me get some of the, anybody from the public want to comment on this?
It's just a traffic nightmare, I live right across the street from it.
You gotta get them in here, Jim Andrews.
I had people turning around in my circle driveway all night, headlights coming through the house. I had to put cones out in the driveway to keep the traffic from coming through. They go around them. It's kind of a pain in the butt for me, because for me to get in my yard, I gotta move the cones out of my way to get on my own property. It's just a nightmare.
And I believe that must be your wife that's also signed up too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so. And I have one other gentleman, Ben, Ben Mix. Come right ahead.
Yeah, so I, I lived pretty extroverted, so same issues. Last year caused a lot of traffic, and before they got the traffic detail, there was a lot of near miss accidents, lots of honking horns, people hitting the brakes trying to get into the driveway to see that display. You know, I personally work from home, so having that happen every day, all day, for two solid months is gonna be a little disturbing for, you know, just regular day working. You know, I had the same issue, people turn around my driveway constantly. Even when they did get the police detail, it was backing up traffic behind the curb, couldn't even see the end of the line. Took me five solid minutes just to get out of my own driveway to go pick up a pizza. I'd be, you know, perfectly fine if this was limited to more, just like a few days around each of the holidays, but the entire month back over in December seems a little disrespectful to everyone in the neighborhood.
I'm open to suggestions on what would be a compromise.
We would be happy to, to make signage as well, I, I think some of the issues on the right-hand side of the road was people not understanding not to turn left into the driveway. We'd be happy to make the signage for both those houses as well, because we were, as the time went on in Christmas, the, the signage expanded as we were learning the best way to go about it. So we would be happy to provide the signage for no left turns on that side of the road, which might help with some of the traffic just going past, because I, I was out there a few nights as well with, with the constables that were out there.
Now, last year, you didn't do Halloween.
Halloween happened, but, yeah.
They did. Can I, did I ask?
Don't worry, it's a Cal.
Well, I just wanna ask about when, when the, when the town sergeant took initiative to help set up a, a three-lane issue and prevent those turns from kind of, I, I had calls too. Traffic was backed up to that light by, was at least, you know, and people just couldn't even get through because they were trying to make that left turn, you know, have hand, left-hand turn. After that, I understand the concerns you have. So I just wanna know, once that third lane was set up, and I'm sure we all, many of us drove through it, did that mitigate any of the issues, or did not? Because it seemed like people had to keep driving beyond, because they weren't.
I think it helped with like.
Only on the weekends when the cops were there.
Yeah, and it like, you know, preventing accidents, you know, people slaying on the brakes and things like that.
So that becomes my next question. If it helped when there were private duty constables, whatever, traffic assist people, it got better. So I think probably when the town says.
Somewhat, but, but if I'm, if I'm coming from this end of town down to my house.
To your house.
They cone my house off, I can't even turn in my driveway. I have to go down to Bald Hill Nursery, turn around, once I cross the traffic, you have to sit there and wait to get across the traffic. Then I have to come back up to get in my own driveway.
If you can even get out of your driveway perfectly.
Exactly.
I think.
It's like where the headlights are coming in the driveway.
Yeah, and I, I think it's the, yeah, because I, I think it's the, i- if we could do the no left-hand turn signs might help with the headlights turning in the driveway, because I think that was a.
Well, they're coming into my driveway because, because, oh, they've missed your house, and so they're turning around in my circle. And I, I cone it off, and they're still going around my cones and everything else to turn around. So I got headlights coming through my, my house all night long with them turning around. This mostly happens during the week when, when we don't have any, any cops out there. So, you know, if, if we could like limit it just to the weekends when the cops are there and not all week long, that would be helpful.
Because I, I think also it's, the, the hard part was that, that it is their driveway, they were putting up their Christmas decorations, so I, I think some of it, that's why it's all week. We could leave the signage out, I, I, I'm not sure they wanted to for, for the town's purposes, but we were only putting the signage out when the constables were, were present.
Well, so of course, that begs then the question. And I understand it's for a worthy cause, but I also understand it's, it's a neighborhood disruption. So if the constables are present sometime, and it mitigates or helps to mitigate, why can't we arrange to have constables present at other hours?
I think unfortunately that would just put the cost too prohibitive for the, for the fundraising. I, I just, I, I agree, I get what you're saying. No, no, I, I definitely get what you're saying.
So perhaps you need to then backdoor some of the expanded days, but.
I don't think really the issue is too much whether or not there's a detail out there, because, you know, it's, yeah, it's not causing accidents, but it's just slowing down traffic more, so it's one or the other. I think the better compromise is not having it every single day.
Well, that was a thought that I just shared, that we're limited to not as many days. On the other hand, if people, obviously, you know, the issue there, if people hear about it, they're gonna come thinking it's.
They come from everywhere.
All, all over every day, so, you know, that becomes an issue of posting it so that it's not all month. And I can understand this people's concern, I really do. If it were off the, if it were off the beaten path, as we call it.
Different vocation.
But you're on, you're on a main thoroughfare area of the traffic during the day from Connecticut. And sometimes, I live on the road, and I can get on my own driveway. And, and what I'm talking about is right, talking about traffic. So I think that's a concern, I really do. I think they're talking over here.
We're looking at a calendar, trying to figure something out.
I was also just gonna say, if it, maybe if we could work with the neighbors on the Halloween side and, and see if we can, the, the problem is the Halloween side, I think, is the smaller of the two, but work on the signage there, so everybody is, is okay with that.
Question from both parties, like October, will it Wednesday through Sunday, timeframe 12 to 9 work?
And that would be better, but I would think, I would prefer weekend only, really.
Me too.
Like I said, I work from home.
Frank brought up the thing, Thursday through Sunday, 12 to 9, and then you wanna go one day till midnight?
If you still have the displays up, you're not gonna stop people from coming. I mean, if they're up, they're gonna come.
Yeah, unless you block off the whole driveway.
Exactly.
It's saying that people can't come at all. That's like they should do that, if they're saying that's gonna be part of the problem.
It's not the right vocation. The road's too busy enough as it is.
That was my point.
And it's a nightmare, normal, never mind with this.
I'm open to suggestions in the council.
If you just say weekends, it's gonna be more of the, more traffic.
On the weekends?
On, everyone's gonna come on the weekends, where if people come in during the week, they can scatter themselves. I'd gone through there with my granddaughter and drive up during the week, drive back out, you know, for, for both of them. But, you know, I mean, I can see your part, but at the same time, you're raising money for something that people are dying every day from. You know, it's like, if it, if it was me, I would, I would be like, I would suck it up for a little bit so that we could raise money, because people are dying every day from cancer, especially breast cancer. And I'm on Yago Valley Road, and people fly, people flying down my road like nobody's business. They pull in, they pull in out of my driveway, non-stop, turn around, trucks going by, midnight with, you know, so loud it wakes me up over my air conditioner. You know, and that's, you know, and I grew up in Cranston, I moved down here for the peace and, peace and quiet, but for me, it's, I mean, I don't live there, but you're still.
I, I have a first one, Davey is. Can, for discussion here, I, I, I'm honestly wondering if we can't try to limit hours and approve only this first display for Halloween and come back at the November meeting.
I agree with Cal.
I'm just saying, see if you can mitigate, see if you can work, see if you can address the concerns you hear here.
Especially with Halloween, maybe you can do a situation where it's just PM hours. You know, at, you know, dusk towards, uh, 9:00 p.m. You know, where, so it's not, it's not during the day. I mean, that, that's one of the big attractions to the, to the displays, the fact that they light up, so more people, I think, tend to see them, or want to see them at nighttime when they do it during the day. Right, and I, and I can understand having it available a lot of hours, but.
But it, does it, does it have to be a whole month, can it, that just be like the week of Halloween?
Right, yeah, right, yeah, I understand.
So I'm not for or against or anything, I just wanna propose a couple of ideas. This is sort of like a, sort of like a business in a way, like in other words, you're raising money. And if you restrict his hours too much, he's not gonna be able to raise nearly as much money. And then the other side is, obviously, I don't think it's right what's going on in your driveway at all. But there's two sides here, it's difficult, but if you restrict them too much, they're not gonna be able to raise enough money either. And that's, that's a great cause.
Now, how is the, how is the breakdown lane set up on each side of that road? Can, can you make it so?
There's a bunch of a breakdown lane on your side, is there?
Is there a breakdown lane on one side and not on the other?
It, can I just say, I don't know if you saw it, it opened up heading, heading south. It opened up a third lane, and, and drivers were told they could not make a left-hand turn. So they had to go further toward this direction, heading, heading west, actually, and turning around somewhere else, which was where they must have been turning, I don't know whether it was turning up ahead.
They were turning around by South Road.
By South Road, for that, that.
And that's another nightmare out there.
Because it's a very wide area, so they go up there.
That's, that's, that's all of those.
That's, that's what I do when I went to go see it, is I turn around on South Road. That was a problem.
It's a traffic nightmare.
How long is the display?
How long?
How long, like distance?
I'd say people probably see it for about eight minutes, eight to 10 minutes.
I mean, like miles?
It's, it goes up the driveway, turns around at the barn, and comes back down.
It's a long driveway.
One suggestion, that road widens up a lot as you head down towards North Kingston. Maybe talk to the sharpeners that owns Bald Hill, because they've got that huge section of pavement right in front. They've got the room for it, they might not wanna do it for the hours, but it's, it's not that far down from where you.
I just wanna make sure it's clear, because I, I was just coming here on behalf of Mr. Gemma for, since it's his honeymoon. It's his personal holiday display, it's, it's not owned or operated by the Gloria Gemma Foundation. It's, he's receiving donations, so it is, that's why it's based at his house. It, it is his personal display, I just wanna make sure it's not mistaken that it, it's an actual organization to put the display on.
What can we do to prevent these people going in the driveway?
I, I honestly, yeah.
People do that anyway already.
I, I honestly think there's, there's some more signage that can be made, there's some other pieces that can be made. It's, it's, I, I think we, we can figure it out, I, I'd have to go down and look at the different houses down there on that side. But I, I'm, I'm feel that there is ways we can work it out, I think with the constables doing the traffic was much better on those weekend dates, because I was there that first weekend where the constables were not.
Do you know whether or not the, the acting, if you will, um, what do I say here, are, the person taking Bill Donovan's place. Yeah, what's it? The town sergeant, the position, good thing, thanks for bringing the, the town sergeant position. Has anybody been in contact with them to be sure that he?
I believe he handled the detail at his wedding on Saturday, I believe, he knew, knew this was coming up, yes.
Okay, my, my question, obviously, is if it's been addressed with him in terms of this particular application, you know, you think, okay?
Normally, we get a letter from the town, he's the interim town sergeant, only the town sergeant will give us a letter that you need or don't need additional.
I think we have to tell him you need, need it, if we grant it, we have to.
I told school, and he said, I mean, you know, he had schedules and, you know, anticipated it.
So there's been discussion, there's been discussion. Right, and there's been discussion.
Here's one thing I, I was thinking about, the, the problem is the northbound, the northbound Brian Schroeder, heading northbound on 102. If you could advise him to go down to the fire station, you could execute a control with lights, turn around there, possibly doing a safe, safe turnaround, you know, but that means you also have to keep people moving past South Road and past New Road to, to get to that point. So that's, that might be an option, you know, with safety of turning around, to get him back southbound on 102. And you do have the lights available.
Danny? It would seem, in fairness to everybody, to these people, to the Gemmas, to the foundation raising money, that the best thing to do would be to implement a plan for a toll, a complete plan, bring it back to you. And if that's successful, then you have something to go on for December. It would have to be a plan that would accommodate these people, but also accommodate the whole situation itself. There has to be an answer to that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with Mr. Natalie, but the problem is we have some time constraints here. So, I mean.
Right, next meeting is October 4th.
Have, have you met with either one of the, the, the residents?
I have not, no, I have not.
No? See, this is, you know, the level of compassion goes out to you, because plenty of people in this room have lost loved ones to this disease, so we know. But at the same point, I can understand what the, the, the people are going through that have to deal with this day after day for, you know, a couple of months in a row. So more logistics gotta go into this.
Well, and, and I know Mr. Gemma really cares about the neighbors as well in this, it, it's not that he's trying just to do this. So that's why I will say that we will continue to work on, e- even after, it's granted, if something didn't work, we would still be working on the, the, the plan for traffic, because it's.
I don't know whether you're amendable to, can we table this in the next council meeting? I mean, that wouldn't be till the 5th of October.
I think that was the, I think that's why it was placed on this, knowing that he was out of town, because of that, the October 1st setting up of the display.
And then between now and then, you can get all the logistics in place, and maybe everybody can reach a compromise and negotiate a solution. Will that work?
We gotta look at you guys and think.
Think that'll be fair, wait till the next meeting to.
What we can do is, we, we can continue this till next month, which is October 4th, the first Monday.
Excuse me, that's right, yeah.
The 4th. You're gonna have to get together with Mr. and Mrs. Andrews and Ben and figure out something that works.
We're only, we're only be talking about Halloween, and then we'll see how that goes, and then do. You're shaking your head no, Mr. Andrew.
Yes, I'm saying, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Andrews, I see a small shake no.
I just don't like the ideas of headlights coming through my house, um.
And we can't say that we blame you, that is, I mean, that's why we wanna see if we can table and come up with a better solution till at least October.
Right, that's, that's why it's like, you know, just limit, limit the time, you know?
Depending on how October goes.
A week in October is, is maybe sufficient.
A week in October is, is maybe sufficient.
Corrected for December.
I mean, we're talking a long period of time, but they want us nine weeks of this. I mean.
Can I just ask, are the headlights the ones coming down the driveway as they exit? Not, not a trip, it's the leaving, exiting, that was the problem.
Leaving the driveway and then when they do the circle turn and they head up to.
If we cut it in half, take the front half off, what percentage of, of money do you raise? You probably raised most of it the two weeks prior. What if we cut it in half and just took out the beginning two weeks of each of them? Wouldn't you raise 70, 75% of the?
I can take a look at it. It was honestly pretty even through the weeks last, it was pretty even through the weeks last year. So I, I can take a look at it with them to see what the breakdown was, but it was pretty constant throughout.
I would think there'd be more people closer to the holidays.
Right, but if you, right, if you, right, if you reduce it to, uh, you know, a week or whatever, then, you know, if it's advertised, everybody's going to come during that week. So then we're going to get bombarded that week. And we're, then we expect that instead of having it, you know, prolonged all, all month long.
And we can plan to just not be around if we don't want to.
You know, go on vacation.
I can't plan to not be here all month.
All right, what we're going to do, I'm going to make a motion to continue this public hearing and we're going to have to get together with Mr. and Mrs. Andrews and Ben and come back and see us. So I'm going to put a motion out there to continue the public hearing till October 4th. A second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Get some contact in a moment, he's going to have to get ahold of you, so. See if we can come up with a solution, so. All right. The next public hearing is a proposed, a proposed amendment to the Exodus Code of Witnesses, Chapter 42, Taxation, Article 6, Tax Exemption to Certain Persons Over the Age of 65 Years or Fully Disabled, Section 42-156, Exemption of Persons Over the Age of 65 Years or Fully Disabled. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think this is Carrie. Is Carrie the next?
Yeah, Carrie, so.
Come on up. She's going to explain it to us.
All right. This has been, uh, years in the making. So what we're looking to do is, uh, we use the town attorney to provide a tax exemption to qualifying residents over the age of 65. Current deadline for forms, we, you know, over 500 families on an annual basis. Uh, current deadline is March 15th, so we're seeking to push that deadline by 30 days till April 15th.
So that's, uh, we're doing is just changing the date.
Changing the date.
This is just a proposal.
It's been sent to the General Assembly, it's been approved at the House of Assembly, and now it's back.
We have to do a taxation though.
Absolutely.
I mean, the issue, if I could just be clear, and I was a liaison for quite a while for the office there, it, it was, it's been an ongoing concern that many, many residents have cleared the basket why the date couldn't coincide with IRS filings so that their tax returns would be prepared, which they need to. Do not pay, do they not need to submit?
They do.
To you, uh.
I'm not either the federal tax.
So, so people who, who still had a deadline of a month later had to be sure their taxes were prepared a month ahead of time, which isn't always possible for people, especially the traveling, the case.
Drop out of the economy, there's storms in there.
So it's been, it's been a concern for the time. Finally, through enabling legislation, as Carrie said, you're able to get permission to change, uh, from the 15th of March to 15th of April. So Carrie deserves credit for pursuing it and for the counsel. Good thing.
I had, what person wants to speak, Dan?
Okay. Back 15, 16 years ago, I guess this opens us up for this discussion. 15, 16 years ago, uh, we had a Republican town council who froze the taxes for the elderly. And, uh, we were right on the age where we should have been able to get on that whole thing. And the next thing you know, that's what happened in this town. Uh, the Democrats came in and immediately they proceeded to tell everybody how this couldn't happen because we have so many young families, uh, who can't afford this. They all make $180,000 a year, but the elderly were not, uh, able to, we couldn't do that for the elderly. We couldn't have a tax break for the elderly. If you wanted a tax break, like I've lived in a town now for 30 years. I've had no kids in the school system. I get nothing from this town. I'm lucky if they plow my street and don't run me over. And the Democrats came in, and I'm, I'm doing it because I'm saying the parties because this is actually what happened. They came in and they immediately took it right out of there. They took the whole thing right out from under our legs. Uh, for the reasons that the young people didn't have money and it wasn't fair. And if you were old, that's your problem and you should have to, uh, uh, go and tell them why it is that you needed a tax break. Well, you've paid taxes your whole life. You should get something. There should be something there. But no, it was just wiped right out. Now you're talking about changing a date. Well, you know how much I get for, off my taxes after 30 years in this town? $75. Give me a break. Other towns have something that goes in to support the elderly. I'm going to step off, Frankie. They have, they, there has a new law that came in, passed by our very good Democratic, uh, uh, governor and a wonderful Democratic state politicians that says now that the towns are allowed to have an individual 60 years older be able to volunteer 120 hours a year. And for that, they receive 1,500 towards their taxes, a tax break, $1,500. Well, I think you guys should do that. I think it should be done by this town because it's never done anything for the elderly. And, you know, the Democratic Party hasn't seen a tax dollar it didn't like. Well, you know, I pay a lot of taxes and I get nothing for them. So I'm willing to come. I'll clean toilets. I'll come in here and I'll clean every GD toilet you have for as many hours as required. And I'll bring my wife with me and she'll clean the rest of the toilets. And then we'll get $3,000.
You only have one tap.
We'll clean it over and over again. We'll go to the schools and clean toilets. Go anywhere you want and clean toilets. I'm not proud. But what have you done for the elderly? Nothing. Now you have a chance because the reason of it being is that the people like myself, my wife, and many other people who are retired have a lot of good experience. I mean, we could go in, uh, and we could help with anything that had to be done on titles or checking any type of thing because that's what we do. Uh, but we clean toilets. We don't care. There are so many people in this town who have so many good qualities. And it's been known all the way down the line that the elderly are the people you can depend on. They come to work, they work hard, they do what they have to do. So I'm calling on the town council to do something for us. Do something, I like to see you say, okay, we're going to give you all $3,000 off of your taxes because we've dolled you for years. But if you can't do that, then put it into effect that, hey, you come in here, you work 120 hours a, a year, and we'll give you a 1,500 tax break. If you can't do, the, the, I'll do 120,000 and I'll take a grand. I'm not greedy, but you can't keep doing this to us. You tax us, you tax us, you tax us. The school system takes every dime that we have. There's no justification as to what's on there. They're suing us again because we can't get any, they don't, we haven't given them enough. We give them our souls. So again, I'm calling on the Exeter Town Council to do the right thing, to turn around and push that through because our great Democratic governor and our great Democratic people.
Smart, it's not that bad.
Our great Democratic people have done this for us. And as Republicans, we need to take advantage of them for once in their life, given us a break. I'm finished.
All right, thank you, Fed. Any other discussion? So, okay.
I have, I have another issue upon that. I don't know if this is the time you want me to bring it up, Mr. President, or not, but I expected it to fall under correspondence, but it did not, so.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to?
I'll go right ahead. We're still in the public hearing, so go right ahead, so.
So all kidding aside, and thanks for the history lesson from Mr. Natalie, but he isn't incorrect in his assumption there was legislation that was passed and signed by the governor that essentially said that. And there was an article in the Providence Journal, and I have the pieces of the legislation that were put in by the Senator and the Rep. from Barrington. And the legislation is enabling legislation. Uh, it's, so the town, it says may, not shall, put this into effect. Um, I have spoken to somebody at the League of Cities and Towns. I didn't, I was not even aware of this actually, until it was brought to my attention, not by Mr. Natalie, but another individual in town over the age of 60. Um, and then subsequently, I ended up getting contacted by three or four other people. I'm surprised nobody else on the council did either. Um, but in any event, essentially what it boils down to is, as you all know, is that any legislation that comes out of the State House, the devil's in the details, but you can pretty much sum it up on the last page. And it says, "This act would authorize cities and towns to establish a program to allow persons over the age of 60 to provide volunteer services in exchange for property tax credit up to $1,500. The credit would be calculated by multiplying the number of volunteer service hours by the state minimum wage per hour." And that's where some of my questions came into play because as we all know, currently the minimum wage is a $150. But the legislature in their infinite wisdom has decided that as of January 1st, it's going to be 1225 and then it will increase annually until it hits $15 an hour in January 2025. So obviously, that's a whole other issue that we can debate at a whole other time as to whether we should do it or shouldn't do it or whatever. But the legislation is on the books. So as, as expected, call it an unfunded mandate and call it anything you want. The concept, I think, is a good concept. Now, you still have to have the money to pay for it. So is it something that the town wants to look at from the standpoint of the next budget season or when we go into that? Uh, you know, is it something that, or when we have a budget, a budget work session that we want to talk about? We want to talk about the amount of people that are in town that would be eligible for this? And then, you know, do the math and then sit down with the treasurer and sit down with the assessor and figure out what it is and what it isn't. So, I mean, it's an idea and I think it's been talked about in the past, whether it's an exemption or home state exemption or tax breaks for the elderly or whatever it is. Now it's actually a black and white. And it's on the books. But like I said, it's, it's enabling. So you're going to see some towns that will enact it and some that won't. So.
Can I, can I make a suggestion here?
It's something that you might want to, something that I think you should, maybe should be on our radar to definitely consider.
I think I'm going to count because Carrie wanted to speak to that.
I just, there isn't email threat because this bill has been with the General Assembly several, several years.
Yeah.
Just now that passed.
Right.
And there's a lot to consider.
Right.
Um.
You probably have just as many questions as I do, Carrie.
So what I can do is I can forward, um, I'll keep track of the communities, the municipalities that adopt this if they do.
You can take this with you if you want.
I do have a copy of the bill.
Yeah.
I also have an email threat.
Representative, uh, uh, Knight and Senator Coin, I believe, were the sponsors.
Okay, I do have a copy of the bill, so we'll keep an eye on the municipalities that adopt this. Uh, of course, there's going to have to be the funds and then somebody to administer it. And then if you have a, a dozen, um, over 65 or over 60 residents, who you think can choose to volunteer, liability, if they get hurt, um, there's a lot to consider.
Right.
So I do have, um, some things I can forward to council on that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have an email threat, the assessors going back and forth. And I, and then until then, I said we make a phone call about this and Jeanette of people looking to volunteer, so I'll send some information.
That was going to be my question. Who's going to assign these people?
Me, Lynn. We volunteer to administer. Lynn and I volunteer to administer.
And if they scrub in the toilet.
And we need more, I'll find some more of those people. All right, we're, we're getting off track.
And my suggestion was, and it's a good, it's a, it's a valid issue to address. So my suggestion, since it seems to be going beyond the scope of this public hearing, is that we put it on as a new business item next month, have some discussion. There have to be, I mean, I'm sitting here wondering, do we go, do we walk in the door, go to Lynn or Pat and say, I'm here, what do you want me to do? I mean, there obviously has to be a structure. But that's a discussion, not part of this changing the date. I, I just would suggest we put it on a new business and then, and then address it.
You want me to contact or Dan, I can work with Carrie and I can see what else I can find out in the cities and towns. I can report back if it's on the, if it's on the council again next month.
Would you like it to be there? I mean, I think, I think it's open the door and then, then assign and then continue it.
So we'll put it on next month.
On the new business.
Okay, back to us.
Okay, now we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Now, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And.
I move, I move to adopt the ordinance change, amended ordinance change of the date from the 15th to March, the 15th came out. And Carrie's already having a chat with her. She said, want to get it done so we can change the mailing, so the mailing, so out they'll have new dates and. So. We're ready to vote on it.
You had a motion? Did you second it?
No, Dan.
Oh, I seconded it, okay. Okay.
Here, definitely.
Now we need a bomb to you, so.
Well, I mean, you know, as long as, I can't be the only one.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, on to the next person. New business.
Thank you, Carrie, very much.
Extension and renewal of Declaration of Municipal State of Emergency. And under the advisement of our Emergency Management Director, we need to extend it again because the governor extended his executive order again.
Will the declaration be extended for another month?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consideration, discussion, and possible action department environmental management grant opportunity to protect open space. What was the, the one where?
Right, um, Bill, do you have to well do that to you because it's the DM.
That's one where we need to cough up money, right?
The DM is not going to grant for open space and yes, we would have to match it by 50%. And that would be dependent on the project. So first question Bill has is, do you want to do? No, you're going to have to match.
We've got to get this script back on the timetable.
Well, yeah, there it is. And, and just under discussion, um, Dan, I, I looked at it quickly. It's very little time. And, and, and there might be some pieces of minimal expense, but we don't know what those are. I don't know what those are. And I don't know, I mean, I, I guess, and I'm glad you're now here. We need to throw more, but I'm wondering if, um, maybe if they have any thoughts on, have you seen this? All right, so my thought is perhaps that we could forward this to the Land Trust Commission just to see if they have something they'd like to report back. That there may be, they might know, or they might be, I don't know, they might know. So my motion would be that we forward this, this communication to the tru, to the trust and ask if they have any suggestions that they could forward to us. We don't have much time, but at least let them ponder it. They may be knowing about something. Dan, do you know, we don't know, we don't know if.
Second.
Oh, second, sorry. Do you know, anybody know of any pieces around? Well, maybe, there may not be. Or maybe if there's big pieces, they're so pricey that it's not going to work, but anyway, that's my. Or maybe if there's big pieces, they're so pricey, that it's not gonna work, but anyway, that's my thought. Would you mind taking a look at this?
Sure, it's actually, um, we put a miscellaneous estimate in there, new business for Agnes on Thursday.
You did.
We have a full plate, but we're trying to hit that one too.
Well, just, sure.
We have a couple of grant opportunities that we plan on discussing, if not this Thursday during our October meeting. We understand that the deadline for that grant is pretty tight, but they do come up really regularly. Um, the issue is that applying classes for protection, which is an initiative we're working on.
Good, good. It, it seems like this, and if it doesn't happen now, as Janelle said, it might, it might be prepared for something that comes down in the future. Well, that was my motion, and did someone, did you second it, Dan, or someone like that?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks to Department of Public Works awarding a bid replacement of two thousand seven Ford pickup, less trade. I didn't place it for Steve and Maria. I'm looking at your recommendation, you don't want to do no trade.
Well, the amount that they gave us, I believe we should just hang on to it for another.
Six thousand dollars.
Correct.
My question, Maria, what did we budget in the budget for that truck?
So, uh, was one thirty-two?
Oh, it's one, one thirty-seven, seven twenty-nine was the budget. The carry forward was forty-seven, seven oh three, for a total budget of one eighty-five, four thirty-two.
That's the truck and machine, right?
That'd be correct.
What was it, one eighty-five what?
One eighty-five, four three two.
Well, for Dan, for discussion, I, I, I want to put a motion on the table, basically, we accept Steve's recommendation, and then we can discuss, and if we don't, we don't.
Second for discussion? Okay, go right ahead, Cal.
No, no, I, I.
Well, I'm sitting here, I just did some quick math. You've got roughly a hundred and eighty-five grand between a truck and a backhoe.
Correct.
So if we go with the diesel option, sixty-three thousand dollars, it's roughly gonna leave you one twenty-two. And your close to backhoe is coming in higher than that.
Not exactly.
Well, I've got two here, we haven't put out the bid yet. I'm looking at the, the gas motor, which is nine thousand dollars cheaper than the diesel.
It's the longevity of the diesel would be the reasoning. We have an oh-seven truck that's plowed snow since then, and spread soil, and it's still going. If you had a gas motor in that truck, it would not be still going.
I disagree with that, Steve, because I look the way for diesels.
How many mi, how many miles do they put on those things per year, on that particular?
That particular truck drives just about every day.
How many miles per year approximately?
Eighteen. It's a, it's a type of miles, it's not the distance for that particular truck, but the, we've had gas engine trucks in the past and had a lot of trouble. That's why they went diesel. We do not currently have a gas tank at our facility. So all gas vehicles the town owns, we have keys to the pumps that, uh, for DOT or the state of Rhode Island. We can gas up the veteran cemetery DOT facilities. So in a storm event, veteran cemetery closes, they're only open during the day. So we would have to go get gas in either North Kingston or Old Valley for the vehicle, because we only, we don't have gas on hand at the facility at all. So, we have diesel, two thousand gallons, which is why everything we own, even our lawnmowers are diesel.
Steve, can I ask, with your experience, you've converted, uh, for, for a liability and extension of life? Is that the reason you have oil? So I've talked to you today, but obviously, certainly not my area of expertise, but I rely on your experience.
The increased power and longevity is what you're paying for. And it's worth a thousand dollars a year over the gas engine. And the, just the inconvenience of having to go out of town to get gas during a storm event, and the time lost, man hours lost, that, that will add up also over the life of the vehicle.
So just to, just to add to this, I just switched one of the trucks that we use from diesel to gas, if it's low miles, simply because it's nine thousand dollars less, maintenance is less, less things to break. It, I didn't really, the new Ford, they're looking at it here, is the new seven-three gas engine, eight-cylinder, great engine. That's what I have right now. I don't know, something to consider.
I had, I had, I had the Ford gas engines in my own work trucks, and the manifold rotted right off the, the motor, and that truck wasn't in the soil. So there's issues why I stick with diesel, and it's more than just, uh, the longevity and the power and the convenience, obviously, and the, the way that the department is set up with diesel-only vehicles. We removed our gas tank because it was a liability at the facility.
It's a problem.
So the cost to put in a, a fuel gas tank, even in above-ground, is expensive. So, and it's, again, it's the lost time. There's a lot to it.
Probably use more money than, than nine grand.
I mean, I have no problem buying the gas truck. Well, when I go to replace it in five years instead of fourteen, or something, I, I don't, that's the thing, that's what gets me. We've had gas ones in the past, many of them. So we have the experience in what we put them through. So, they're all, it's all the same. So I, it's, again, I have no problem buying the gas, they're all, we will save money.
My concern is, number one, I've moved away from the diesels because of the problem with all the efficiency that we put on, and, uh, but.
Expensive, there's, so it was possibly four grand for some of them, but.
But I'm sitting there, I'm looking at what you're gonna have left in a budget, and you're, you're gonna be going out to bid on a backhoe, and you're not gonna have enough to cover, then what are you gonna do?
We have more than enough to buy the backhoe.
You got what, one eighty-five?
Alright, so we'll buy the gas truck, no trade. That'll save us another nine thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, with the gas, that gives you nine, that's putting you in line with a couple of these quotes that we're not looking at.
They're not quotes, by the way.
These are quotes, because we're not the big guy, so.
I know, you don't understand, it's okay. We have no problem buying the gas truck. Alright, I'm just telling you what it's gonna cost us to have the gas truck. That's all. I just want you to be aware of the information.
We don't have to buy a fuel tank?
We don't have to, we just have to.
Drive down to the mobile station two miles south of the public works garage, and throw a truck up.
And we don't pay tax when we buy it from the state.
Okay, is it, oh, that's a big thing. And what happens if there's no, there's, what happens if they're closed during an event, you can't get your?
Correct, that's why we, that's what I was trying to explain to you about the storm events. If it's a power outage, hurricane, windstorm, snowstorm, lizard, we have to go to a state facility to get fuel. The truck will only run for so many hours before it's gonna be out of fuel, especially pushing it hard, plowing snow.
Why no trade? What, wasn't it, what, what is that, that truck is worth more than six grand?
Yes.
To, to the town?
It's basically worth about eight. But I hate to give it away for, and lose two more thousand dollars when you can get another short time out of it.
It's not gonna kill us with repairs or anything like that?
It will, that's the problem, that's why it's, it's fourteen years old.
We shouldn't take the six grand?
We can, I mean, then, the, then you're spending an extra, you're spending three over the gas if you take the trade.
Do the trade, go with the diesel.
Well, that's the other option.
I like that option.
That's another option, at least we, we can fuel the truck during emergencies. We just lose a, the oh-seven truck, which is skipped when it stops anyways, it's not.
Now the trade, that you're trading in, it's not, they're not getting the plow.
Yes, they are.
Are they taking the plow?
The plow, because the, the new truck comes with a new plow, as well as a spreader.
But that plow will fit some of your other trucks, won't it?
No, no, that's, will not, it would only fit the new truck. That's an F three fifty with a.
How many Ford do you have?
No, I have three more, but it's, MC series plows, they're totally different.
The F five fifty?
Five fifty, yes.
They've got different ears on the body.
Correct.
Plows.
What's that?
A bad plow on it.
On the oh-seven?
Yeah.
It's, you're still usable, but it's an oh-seven plow. That's all.
What's that?
Sell it outright.
Every time we went to dry a private bid outright sale, they'd offer us fifty dollars for things. That's why we went away from them, because we lost so much money. Trades are definitely the way to do it.
I did say trade the truck, and you go with the diesel option, and, you know.
Well, that's fine, I have, like I said, I have no problem, I do prefer the diesel, because of the operations. We can trade in the old one, that's not a problem. So, and the new one comes with a new plow. What's that?
How many miles total?
Well over a hundred and something thousand. I didn't write it down before I left the shop, but.
Our motion.
Wait, so you can have a motion on the table?
Oh.
Cal, do, to accept Steve's recommendation?
Okay.
So what was Steve's recommendation, was it?
Option one, so, no trade, so we need to go on that one, okay? Which is option one, no trade.
So I mean, voting up, nay?
Vote nay, I'm gonna vote nay.
Nay.
Cal.
Oh, I'll vote, uh, uh, did you call a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna vote yes, I spoke to Steve at some length, and then Dr. Steve.
Then we'll put a new motion out to, we're gonna do a blank, options. So option two. Option two. With the diesel motor.
I make a motion for the DPW to purchase, uh, the, option, option one, with diesel engine, with the trade. On the total cost after the trade, sixty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
Is it option one, or is it option?
It's option one.
Option one, diesel motor, that's about the bid for him. I'll second for discussion.
Your motion was option one?
It wasn't option one, though, I think, he, he said option one, option one and the trade. I think he said option one without the trade. So he, that was his motion.
Yeah, my, mine was his recommendation, and we have him writing. I didn't see an option over here, but I just said his recommendation. Okay, right, right. I know, but I'm looking at his recommendation was the basis for my motion. And it's nothing to do with it on, and that's all. That's all.
Yeah, we'll second, sorry. We'll second.
Okay, I second it, you bring the motion, bring on the discussion.
Yeah, sure, because I've worked with him for years, and I remember when he said he could, that he could cover the landfill that was up there, and he could do it in-house, and I thought, you can't do this. And he did, and he saved a lot of money for the town, so, you know, I, I, I rely, I know you've, you guys have your own experience, and I don't think you're out at twenty-four, forty-eight hours, however long it takes when storms.
I've been in every snowstorm since the Blizzard of seventy-eight, Cal, my dream is.
Well, when do you know?
My dream is to sleep in a snowstorm.
Good, so that's fine, that's why I'm, I'm supporting Steve and his recommendation.
Okay, all in favor of the new motion? Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, because I want him to have his truck.
Okay.
Some kind of truck.
Item D under new business, Department of Public Works request a procedure bid rejuvenator penetrating surface treatments of asphalt pavements. You're up against it.
Yeah, this is the same, um, bid we did three years ago, obviously, we cannot extend it. They've held their price for the last three consecutive years. It's the process we use for, uh, preserving pavements, chip seals, as well as, in that same bid is, uh, crack, coal, crack fill, which we use for delamination areas, as well as the infrared heating. We did that at the entrance to the library, in case anybody noticed, that we fixed the utility cut. When you go in the library, it's, you don't pound through that anymore. And that's the, the system by which we did that, was the infrared heating. And, uh, rejuvenator. So just, it's just to get, keep these tools in our toolbox. Uh, hopefully for the next three years, if they'll extend the bid at whatever price it comes through back from that. Which we'll have a comparison, obviously, at the latest bid.
Well, for discussion, I'll move that we, uh, we quit the proceed the bid for the rejuvenator penetrating surface treatments of asphalt pavements as recommended or as requested by our DPW director.
Second that motion. Okay, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item B, Department of Public Works request a proceed the bid sodium chloride oxal. Easy one, right?
Alright, so the story. City Newport had the bid against the, uh, the state of Rhode Island. So where the state of Rhode Island puts out a bid, all municipalities can ride it. Their price with Morton salt was considerably higher than what the, the state's bid. Was considerably higher than the municipalities thought was necessary. So this town, the city of Newport went out to bid with the same language so that all municipalities could ride the bid. The bid that came back through was from, um, Champion Salt, located in Providence, uh, same delivery system, right next to Autumn Morton and Salt, but considerably less cost. Last year alone, the town of Exeter saved over six thousand dollars with salt. Just last year, never mind the two years, or the year before, that was a different municipality, it was Providence that did it. The problem is, Champion Salt was bought up by Eastern Salt, which now has Providence location. What makes the bid non-void, Newport won't redo the bid because they had fifteen other items on their bid, all their gravel, salt, sand, every product that you touch. So knowing this, that's where my seat, the, being the president of Rhode Public Works comes in. I just wrote the spec up for Roxal, language so that all municipalities and school departments can ride the bid within the state of Rhode Island. And they'll end up riding our bid, which will be the same basically cheaper price as it was with Champion, but just through Eastern Salt. And it just, it's a legality, but somebody has to go out to bid, and it was easy for the town of Exeter to do it. And I had the information. So that's what we're, that's why I'm doing it, to save the taxpayers, around six thousand dollars this year. As well as every other municipality that chooses.
Well, with the discussion, I'll, I'll move that we grant, uh, Steve's request to proceed to bid for sodium chloride, AKA Roxal.
Second that motion.
And I would only comment, your experience as president of the association, is that what your title is, of being across the state, making all the DPW directors?
Correct.
And you are taking charge and taking the lead on this, so that others, well, thanks, Dave, and you think we'll save from that?
Definitely.
Good, words come in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item F, Department of Public Works request to obtain an insignificant alteration permit from Department of D, of Environmental Management, two-two-two Kingston Road, that's not you, that's somebody else?
No, that actually was a slight typo, it's not supposed to be obtained, it's supposed to be discussed. If we're gonna pave Kingston Road, which is a gravel road currently, there was talk at our budget hearing about not paving gravel. Mike, I believe that was, you, and I, I have no problem with that, but I'm just saying. The, in, in order to pave that road legally, I would have to obtain a insignificant alteration permit. Because there is a little bit of earthwork that has to be done in order to make the road safe and wide enough. So there is some alteration that needs to be done, especially elevation changes for drainage. And by code, I cannot raise the, or change elevation more than four inches without an alteration permit. And that includes the asphalt. So if we put a three-inch lift of binder on that gravel road, uh, we'd need an alteration from it. But the, there's discussion, my discussion I would like to have with the council is, do we want to pave it, are we gonna continue with that plan? Do you want to keep it gravel, and reallocate the funds to other roads in the next year's capital improvement program? So these are the things I won't bring up, knowing the issues that are gonna come up with the permit. Because of the wetlands on the side of that road, especially down, um, the south Kingston end. Primarily. All the Lord of Danrins, all of that, that come out and bloom. Just, just because of the, the, how close that is, and, so that's why the discussion, and, because I have to have my time to prep that road if we're gonna pave it next year. So we have through, I know we have till July or August, but in order, if they give us, I, I apply for the permit, and they want a full-blown set of plan, engineered plans, we can't pave the road anyway. Because we will not have the funds, if they, um, try to go hardball in that respect. Normally, we just get the permit, it's six hundred dollars, and it says no, no. Normally that we just get the permit, it's six hundred dollars, and it says no, no, you know, insignificant alteration permit, here you go. Not anymore. So knowing that, and that we don't have the money for engineering on that project. And if we pave it at the current elevations, we can get away without the permit except for the earthwork. Which means I have to pave it at an hour or in twenty feet that we normally would pave a road.
Could you please repeat that? You're saying we wouldn't need a, we would need a, a, a vari- a variation alteration permit?
We won't need the permit if we do not change elevation or width.
How is that possible?
Because you can change the elevation three inches without a permit.
You could do it in three inches?
We could do it in three inches, but a road to be narrower than I would like, but.
It would have to be narrow if it's just three inches?
Yes, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to get twenty feet. Some of the road we can, no problem. Some actually was gonna narrow.
Why can't we get twenty feet?
It's wetlands, adjacent wetlands. I mean, there's a bank on one side which we can come into and stay away from the wetlands.
But why would it be steep if it's, uh?
Probably eighteen would be the tightest spot on the road. Which is just right down to the minimal on a lane for a vehicle with a center line if you painted it. If, and that's, if you get the permit, then you can change elevation slightly, not a lot, but slightly, as well as width. But it's considered insignificant because you're not doing a full-blown excavation. It's just a, just a widen it, take a little shoulder off here or there, and drainage improvements. But again, if we don't do the permit, we can only go three inches of asphalt with a regrade. But the, the whole discussion hat, needs the, are we gonna pave the road?
Are we gonna pave the road?
Ah, that right, are we going to continue with the, the paving of the road?
Right.
Alright, because if we don't pave the road, we can reallocate the three hundred-plus thousand dollars to another project or multiple projects.
Okay, okay, just not spend it?
Well, there's always so much other work that we can, ever can catch up on.
Okay.
Um, the reason we were going to pave it is that that road underneath is sand. And it has a tendency to, to pound out huge holes, uh, six feet across, four, a foot and a half deep. Uh, because the material that's under the road, we can't excavate it all out, the price would be astronomical. As well as the, the permitting and planning and engineering. So the theory, and we've done it before on, uh, Hockna, William Reynolds Road, has the same material under it. We paved a three-inch lift of asphalt and we haven't had a problem since. So. But that's just, we didn't change elevations on that project, so we didn't have to get the permit.
What's your opinion about paving it or not paving it?
It's the maintenance, I mean, we're, we're just, it's more maintenance with the gravel road, it time materials. Because every time you pound out a sand hole, you go up with the backhoe, you dig out the sand, bring over a load of bank gravel, put it in and compact it, then put a little process on top, regrade the road.
We bought that machine, that was like a hundred and seventy-five thousand, what's that machine that pushes the dirt, the dirt roads?
Oh, the road grader.
Is that specifically used for?
It's a little bit more money than that, but yes, that's what it's for.
So, we, we have one less road they use that new piece of equipment on?
Uh, two thousand thirteen, we bought the road ready.
Okay, it looks brand new. You did a good job keeping it looking new.
Yeah, that does, works a lot. But we still have approximately twenty miles of gravel we maintain. So, but it, it does work a lot. This, and it was the resident request for paving. That's when this, for years, they would have been requesting the road be paved. I know there's several residents on the road that have horses, and I'm sure they do not wanna see it paved.
I, 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 I saw a letter from, uh.
And there was a correspondence. I don't know if it was pulled, I mean, but.
Yeah, Mr., I apologize, Mr. Mike Goyan, yes, Goyan, Goyan, yes, Goyan.
So I just wanna make sure that we go down the right path. If we're gonna go put the effort and the, the money into the project, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page. This was planned, I don't know, four years ago, roughly. And it was the last job specifically on our list so that we could carry forward some funds from each of the two previous years to help fund the project. So.
Okay, uh. We, we need to do a work session.
It probably would be a good idea.
Do it in a work session, do all the information together, and, yeah, so, let's do that.
Right, because I just need time if I'm gonna do it to, I need to start fairly soon with certain processes, tree removal, such things, so.
Let's schedule a work session in October.
Uh, Columbus Day is, what, nine is a Saturday, ten, eleven, Columbus Day's eleven. It's the last week of this month, isn't it, possible for people, uh, it's in Denver? Now, you, Steve, you, you need to, we need to talk about this sooner rather than later, I assume. Can two or three weeks give you time?
Right, that's not a problem.
Well, I'm just asking.
Do it in the next week, for the twenty-seventh of September? That's the last Monday of the month.
Anything on that? Schedule that last Monday, you know, uh.
I'm gonna do that.
I work for you, Frank, the twenty-seventh, the last Monday of the month?
Yeah, well, sure, you'll be early for the twenty-seventh.
I won't be here next week, and then the following week is, I'm available the twentieth. The twentieth and the twenty-seventh works for me.
I'm available the twentieth?
Yeah. Okay.
Twentieth?
Twentieth? Okay, September twentieth, we'll do a work session with it, so. Okay.
So what does this mean? This means that we, we've decided to go ahead?
What does this exactly mean? Well, that's what we're finishing at four, right, to decide. Yes, Steve? No?
Right, it's just to get all the information on the, on the table so that everybody understands what's going on.
Yeah.
And I need, so that I have the proper information from the council in the direction they want us to move forward in.
Okay. Alright, next up. Just sitting here so patiently.
Six-thirty or seven?
Uh, what's good for you guys? Six-thirty or seven?
Six-thirty, get out early, man.
Okay. Work six-thirty or seven either, works for me. You got it? Six-thirty?
Alright.
Alright, six-thirty.
My schedule is just giant as everything else is.
Item G, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust request to hold guided walk on Tectil Trail October sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Range date is October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. You're up.
Okay, so this walk is part of the Rhode Island Land Trust Council's Land Trust Days, where all the land trusts across the state are invited to have an activity. Land Trust Council promotes it, we would promote it as well. Uh, we've, uh, been in discussions with Nan Quinlan, who's the Wild and Scenic Rivers liaison with the Wood River Watershed Association. And she's willing to do a guided mindful walk at Tectil Trail, which is right across the street from Brown Mill Pond.
Yeah.
Um, so it's about a little bit less than one mile. Twelve, fifteen people were anticipating inviting, because that's about all that would work for that type of walk. Uh, they follow the ADA ramp and then come back down on Tectil Road. It'll take about an hour. So we're requesting permission to hold that hike. Since it's on DEM property, we would have to pull a special use permit. I've been in touch with Will Walker at DEM, who issues those permits. He doesn't see an issue with it. I've gone through the permit application process. Um, the one thing that I would like to bring to the town's attention is that they're requiring a certificate of insurance, which is fairly standard, just having them add on to their certificate of liability insurance, um, for the walk. And I believe that that will last for about a year, um, the highlighted section of the CLA section. Yeah, well, we have to, but there is no COVID waiver that, that's been removed from the table, so we don't need to do those anymore. So that's the purpose.
See if no one has to check at the beginning of the bike, is that what you mean?
One of the, or have them sign a waiver, you know, stating that if somebody got COVID from going, um, and mask and things like that. They think it's a good opportunity to partner up with Wild and Scenic Rivers and get people out of the nature relatively.
She, yeah, Nan, Nan Quinlan's been a real, a real force behind that. She's come home. And I believe Kevin Montgomery that we appointed has been quite active as well.
Yeah, it's great to see. Which also brings me to part two of this, since you're speaking of Nan as being a force. Nan had proposed after I sent the email to the town council that we get the Wild and Scenic Rivers kiosk out there and do a walk around Brown Mill Pond at the same time. That would be more designed to accommodate people with families and small children. And she volunteered time for two of the Wild Scenic, Wild and Scenic Rivers people to come out and man the kiosk, which is just like, you know, your typical meet setup, uh, to talk about, um, the Wood River watershed and the habitat, things like that.
And how are you reaching out? Did you say you were gonna limit this, this hike, this walk to twelve, fifteen people, or?
The guided mindful hike with Nan really only lends itself to about twelve, fifteen people.
How do you, how does that work? I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, that's a good question. We would put an invite on Facebook and then we would cap the people who respond. Yeah, and have a waiting list. And so with what Nan proposed in mind for the Brown Mill Pond side, which we thought was a great idea as well, um, is that we would probably cap that at somewhere around twenty-five people and try to hold it up at the same time to maximize, um, pulling a permit on the same day. And also be able to accommodate people with small children or people who maybe couldn't make it to the mindful walk.
Okay, yeah.
So for us, you, you, you need a, a motion to approve with the included, and added to the motion insurance, uh, added to our, our, uh, interlocal risk management trust policy? That's what you're asking?
Yes.
Well, make that motion for discussion, that we approve the walk and ask the risk management trust to include that. Well, you think that's a possibility, don't you, to?
Yeah, that's one of the things I, I've gotten them before.
Right, good.
Something I do.
Well, that's my motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I just wanna say thank you. I think, no, just to say that we seem to have a land trust commission.
Been there since the beginning. I was the first liaison, so.
Yeah, well.
Do you miss us?
It's wired.
Well, and other liaisons seem to, no, no, I just, uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now the next one. Do you need an answer tonight?
No, did you get the my one hundred and thirty-three ticket?
I've been trying to read the whole thing.
I read it all.
But I was into the, the first thing is, my intent is to, for nature concerns, he wants to give away something.
Right.
And I'm looking at dam costs.
Yep.
I need to do some more research.
Yeah, I, I.
And you're, you're an environmental engineer, right?
Uh, yeah, I work with them. I'm a science.
I think so, yeah.
Because I'm sitting there, I'm looking at the lead level, those are, those are natural, the arsenic's natural, but.
Right.
But, I'm just getting into the dam parts, so.
Yeah, it's the potential inundation, um, if the dam let loose. And that's something that I would, I don't know if Steve still, hi Steve. Um, I, that's something that, you know, you'd like to talk about with Steve, because we have all the dam evaluation reports. They're fairly recent. DEM classifies it a low hazard dam. Um, if, if, if the dam did let go, there's a low potential for inundation, but again, is that going to affect the groundwater table in the houses that are behind the impoundment? Um, you know, these are all considerations that.
But that's a good thing, isn't it, from which it is not going.
Because they have shallow wells. If they have shallow wells, it's not a good thing.
Yeah, if they have shallow wells, it wouldn't be good, but if they're experiencing flooding in their basements, which are anecdotally hard some of the houses are, so there's, you know, you can't please all the people all the time, so. We made our recommendation and we're, and now there's no urgency in this matter. It's protected land already. So we don't feel like we have to act on it immediately.
Okay, because I really need to read this whole thing.
Yeah, we're, we're willing to come in at a different time.
I mean, I started reading it yesterday at lunchtime, and it was too nice. I went outside and looked back.
I don't mind.
So I read it, and it looks like, if I correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like it's gonna cost us at a bare minimum. If you do something with the dam, a hundred and forty-three thousand, which is, seems like it's unlikely that we would do that choice. All after one point four million, if you chose the highest cost. So it's, it's expensive to take this gift into the town. That's, that's the first thing I thought of. It's already protected, so I don't know.
Yeah, that, you know, in our, in our recommendations, we listed pros and cons as we saw them after we evaluated all the documentation, but we can only put that on your lap and help facilitate the discussion. You know, we, we can't make the final recommendation.
Did you copy the statement?
No, I didn't know.
Can you send him one?
Yep, Steve, I'll email those.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, so, and with respect to the costs, that assumes that there's an imminent failure or failure where a dam would have to be replaced, which doesn't seem like a threat, but obviously, down the line and over the lifetime of the dam, I think that that cost would come into play at some point. And whether that's something that Steve could, um, this is the property that, it's Money Swamp Pond, it's, uh, New London Turnpike area.
The dam right on the side of New London Turnpike?
Yeah, the earthen dam.
Yeah, that's in bad shape.
Yeah, um, we have some, uh.
Is that what the report said?
I know what the report says.
My firm did put the.
That's the one west of New London Turnpike, right?
East side.
Yeah.
New London Turnpike. That's the one by the farmhouse?
Yep, right next to the farmhouse.
So the gate in that pond is, see, is out in the pond quite a ways, and it's frozen solid, uh, closed. And the water doesn't go spill away. It's cut a groove through the dam. And the beaver issue there is another problem on the dam, and they don't maintain it, so it cuts through even further on the south side of the dam structure. It's an earthen dam.
You know, as I outlined in the memo, the pros are, you know, at, at, it, it's not gonna be any immediate upfront cost. It could serve as a centerpiece for a land that could be protected around it. Um, you know, there specifically, there's some large-scale landowners there. Obviously, we'd like to be able to be in a position to, um, get some type of conservation easement or similar protections in place on those properties. And this would kind of be a focal point for us to branch out from. Obviously, the cons are the dam and the potential liability issues with the dam. And the fact that it's also currently protected and for the foreseeable fut- future, we're not, it, it's not at risk of being put up for development. Um, also with the wetlands and other constraints on the property, I don't know how much of it would be developable over time.
Continue that to next month, possibly, if I get a chance to read it all, maybe in a work session, we might be able to put out next, uh.
I'll forward you those reports.
Well, I suggest, excuse me a minute, but if we're gonna meet on the, and Steve is gonna.
If we got, you know, see what, how much work he's got, maybe we can put this in a work session.
Yeah, well, and then if we don't get to it, then we.
There's a lot of reading here.
Oh, I know, well, I know there is, uh, yeah, and, and.
Really, just the first half and then the other, the second half, the second half, you, you.
Just picture. A lot of pictures, but if, if I can understand correctly, Otterbod, I remember what I read through. And Otterbod has approached and asked if the town would be interested, because they wanna divest themselves of something there. Coalings, if they had a stand back.
It's the nature conservancy, yeah.
A nature, major concern, I think.
But they're, um, they've reached out to a bunch of towns, municipalities, for, it's not just Exeter, yeah.
But this particular one is the Exeter.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thanks, Jill.
You're welcome.
Okay, Cal, you're up next. Washington County Regional Planning Council, new organization.
Well, I was, I was recently contacted by the executive director, and it's been, it's been dormant. Uh, but the, uh, the current president, or was elected several years ago, from South Kingston, Abel Collins. Apparently, he and a couple of others, uh, have, have decided that it would be good to try to, to get it back, uh, up and running. So I was asked, since I was the last liaison, so I was in, they were contacting me, Jeff Guadet, the executive director. So I said I would simply put it on the agenda to see if the council wished to, um, go ahead and give the, give him the okay to continue to, to pursue, and, and I, and I would, at this point, be willing to serve as a liaison. I don't know what it's, I may not come to anything, but it would just be the council saying, sure, go ahead and try and put it together. I mean, we, we know there are a lot of issues that can affect South County communities, but whether or not it will really develop into anything or not, it's just, uh, the, the reason, the reason it's there. reason, the reason it's there, Dan, is to just ask that the council wishes to say, sure, go ahead and try it again and, and see what happens and maybe nothing. You remember, this was what, Jim, the prison discussion, that prison has completely separated itself from the Washington County Regional Planning Council, they're separated, to the Cal, well, together. So we have nothing in the budget, but that's fine, we don't have anything to offer other than, uh, liaison, that's what becomes the fruition. So I'll just move it, you, you, you know, right to Jeff Brode, indicated that council supports the concept and that if you wish, I would, I would be happy to be the liaison.
Do we need to have a vote on that, or?
Well, I, I would ask if we could give the vote to send the.
A second, that motion.
Yeah, so I made that motion, Dan, and so.
Discussion, all in favor?
I can say a big comment about the.
Okay, don't pretend, unfinished business. Hey, transfer station purchase.
Very good news, surveyor finally, uh, to produce the final plan, the consent of planner, planner's gonna review it and hopefully adopt it, sets done, everything else is on the agenda, in place, uh, where they'll be hired to do the title matters, he's doing an excellent job, Rick Walsh, I have some confidence in John Pupo, so he's gonna work things out. So that was a major accomplishment this month, getting that done, hopefully, uh, planner, Deepeswell, will be able to, uh, to take care of, um, processing the, the plan and hopefully a closing at the end of September, so that's, that's.
All right, next up, discussion, charter changes, staggering council terms, structuring the financial town meetings.
Well, two topics there, um, the first one is the staggering terms and the walking rights.
So, uh, originally it was my idea to, and I'll explain this from the start to finish, in case anybody doesn't know, to, uh, protect the town from potentially having five new town council members at once. And I didn't feel that was, the way it's set up right now, you could end up with that. The only way that we can work this logistically and make that happen by having staggering terms, 'cause what, what the idea was, have staggering terms, three terms, three, three seats and then two seats, stagger them each every two years, with the, with the move to four-year terms instead of two. And I've struggled with that because I don't like that part of it, it's the only way you can do it, I don't like that part of it at all. And I, 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 I spoke to, had a little exchange with a constituent in town and, you know, he, he makes some good points. And, you know, what if, what if the town decided they voted for five new people? What's wrong with that? That's what the town wanted, that's what the town should get. It doesn't necessarily mean that all five have no experience. So I have changed my mind on that and I would like to remove that portion from unfinished business, we just table that for possible future discussion.
Staggering.
And then the, the second part was the, uh.
You wouldn't, I'd deal with that. You needed a motion, want to say the motion to remove.
Okay, I'll second his motion to remove the staggering council terms, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to thank Ken for doing a lot of work on this, appreciate that, put things together.
Jim.
And Jim as well, yes.
Just tell, once, remind me again, there were several times that, didn't you say that you checked?
In the work, right.
I mean, it's not, wasn't, the idea wasn't that outrageous.
I don't think it was a bad idea, I think the initial, the reason for having the idea was so that we'd have staggering terms, so you got five movies. It took me a while to, I think I may have figured out what the heck I'm doing, possibly at least. And, you know, if you have five of us, you know, some guys are attorneys or had experience before and it might be easy for them, I don't know. But I don't think that you're gonna get five people, it's never happened, but as far as I know, I don't think you're gonna get five people with no experience at all. And if you do, then that's what the people in the town wanted, so I, I just feel comfortable keeping it the way it is.
And your motion, second, to remove, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Second piece was to look at the, um, the issue of what happened in the farm. And, um, so I just had numerous files of charter amendments, two charter commissions, one of discussions, and so I pulled out, um, two things that we already discussed and talked about, one of them actually made to the public here and went to, to the referendum and everything. So looking at, I think we should put this on the work session, it, it's easy to say that, you know, if there's no quorum, then this happens, but if this happens, it affects a lot of other areas of the charter, um, and the financial procedures, it just doesn't automatically pass. And I gave you one example in here of, you know, just the, um, when people have the ability to add a, um, alignment to the budget or consideration, that would have to be addressed somehow. Um, I'm sure there's a lot more that has to go, like, go through, they've got charter and the reason why I kinda stopped that, because we went through, uh, in two thousand and four, I believe it was, we changed the, the all-day referendum and, um, there were eight pages of changes to the charter.
Oh.
Different sections that were, we would have.
Had to be, were affected on that, it's.
Yeah, this may not, but there's still some that would have to be.
I, I had a, I had a, just for the table there, for the conversation, I had a, I had a discussion with a former member of the Richmond Town Council just recently, and they're apparently moving toward, I think he said he's on a charter, uh, a commission, you know, charter revision, assessment, and they are moving toward the all-day proposal, which we did, and as you said, in two thousand and four, which Pat, which I've forgotten, well, I know why, I wasn't sitting here, but, but anyway, I, I, I don't particularly like that, all-day referendum, but that's what some of the towns have gone to, apparently we're from this, looking at that, which we're not talking about anyway, you know, at least I was in. Anyway, that's probably something we.
So, so the background with that one was that at the financial town meeting, we had to wait an extra thirty minutes to get the fiftieth person to walk in, or we wouldn't have been able to.
First time that happened.
Is that the first time it's happened? So the whole point was maybe we put a, a contingency if that, I mean, I think that's, I think we should keep it that way with the townspeople voting, I think that's great for the people, by the people. But if we don't have a quorum, maybe we have a contingency that we, that then the town council will go with the, the budget that they worked on for several weeks.
And you see, the point like dam management district has something.
What do you mean? Some, some.
Yeah, but they have a, a lot, but their, their charter is not complicated, it's thorough, so it's easy to write a paragraph about financials, you ready to tell? But we just, continue on, we can write some language, but, um, and, and just to make sure the intent is that there's no quorum, the budget passes, and then we have to figure out what repercussions are after that.
I don't know if you want comments or not, but, I mean, you can lower the quorum number, you don't have to, have to be the same. The second thing is the population in the town is growing, so the odds of that happening get lower and lower.
How can you, how can we lower it? I mean, it's, it's not, two percent, what is it, four thousand people? Well, two, four, two percent is eighty, we're only at fifty.
Right.
I mean, you lower it, it's very dangerous because people could come in with their, with their friends for a particular agenda and they could vote on something, virtually they could vote on any spending that they want and they could pass it at the financial town meeting. That's dangerous, so if we lower it more than that.
Fire district's twenty-five.
The downside is that you then miss out on the other changes to the budget, like Stephon getting an increase, which wasn't part of the budget, that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have it in the legislature meeting. At the last, you know, so, I mean, it goes, it can, it can work both ways.
Sure, but as long as we keep the quorum at a reasonable minimal number to protect, try to protect ourselves from special interest type of people.
Set it for one, two, three, four, five, seven, set it for seven people. If you get any town council, if nobody else shows up.
I think, I think we'll go in opposite direction to the minimal number, but.
Well, I've been working on the finance stuff, it's more likely.
Well, I'll leave it at fifty for now and see if it happens again, if that was, uh, I mean, as Ken said, it's happened before. But keep in mind, of the fifty people we needed, at least, what, twelve, what did we figure, fifteen or twenty people are the ones that have to be there anyway, so we don't need too many more people, uh, to come in to vote, but.
And if it happens, I can only take one, then we just ask Jim what to do, right?
Make me the star.
Okay, next up, status, the split rock from Park Electric Industries.
So what was the verdict on that? What was the verdict on that? Are we gonna continue that? Are we gonna take it off?
Kick it in, why?
Take it off?
We'll be putting on a white hook for someone.
All right, okay. Bring you up to date on that, I mean, you saw the communications that went out to our, his lawyer and also the new communication we sent out, my suggestion to Park, make sure that they, that we had a violation, that we did process, take them to the next level, um, not just the old communications, but actually, you know, the set out exactly what we've done. Uh, I called the attorney because I had not heard back from him, probably today, because I knew this would be on, um, and he indicated to me that, um, unfortunately, Mr. Palmer, the owner's, uh, going through a very difficult time right now with a family, a very sick family member, I can fill each of you in if you wanna know later, but it is, um, fairly conventional, but, um, in any event, that is his excuse for not getting back to us. Uh, the lawyer told me that he has discussed it with his client and that as soon as he's able to, um, attend to it, that they will. I told him that that may not be good enough for the council, uh, things are progressing and there are violations that are still there, but that I would report that, um, that communication that we had today to you. So that's, that's what it stands. Uh, there's a letter out there, there's a requirement that the gentleman bring the matter up to code, uh, he does have some fairly, it sounds to me, uh, difficult times that he's gone through right now on a personal level, uh, and hopes to be able to, uh, attend to this promptly, but I couldn't get any estimations that I want, that would be, that's what it was like, I just told him I would bring to your attention that, that circumstance.
We haven't heard anything about tomorrow's electrical inspection?
Only that he's waiting for them.
Yeah, he sent out.
Electrical and engineering.
That letter went out, what, two weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
That actually laid out all the violations that are still there right now.
I mean, this has been going on a long time, maybe longer than the person or the family. I mean, this is a safety issue, I drove through there, I often does drive through there, and I was a little, I was a little bit bummed out at the condition of that he's keeping the whole park in. I mean, I was worried about my vehicle, the front end, uh, you know, there's potholes and there's things and I was a little saddened by the, the way he's keeping up the place. And this is a safety issue and this isn't something that just happened, this has been going on a long time, I don't know that we should have more tolerance, this, this to keep allowing this to continue that way, his wires everywhere, I don't know which one it was, but it didn't look good to me.
Mike, I alerted the attorney to the fact that, that it was an ongoing issue and I did not know what the council's feeling could be about the communication, but I did tell him that I would make the communication figure.
What's next, fines?
Well, quite frankly, it could be litigation, it could be enforcement through litigation. Uh, there also is a licensing rule that's coming up, I think, uh, at the end of the year, toward the end of the year, correct?
Yeah.
So that could be a, a point where, where the town makes it known that we're serious. But, uh, again, as you all know, that when you do that, if, if a license is not granted, you're affecting a number of people in that area. So, I mean, that, that's been a problem in the past, but to your, to your question, so what would happen next, that's been, that's being set up with the, with the notice of violation that just went out, um, because that will give me the grounds if it's not enforced, if day the town council says, okay, start the lawsuit, we'll be in a position to do that, so that's, that's why that is done. So, in any event, we're moving along, um, I would suggest that if, that the matter be placed again on, on the agenda for next month, uh, and, uh, hopefully we will get some, uh, some real movement in correcting those violations, I mean, not.
I mean, next month would be more than enough time that he's been given, so. Like, I went by there today, I didn't pull in there, it looks like there's, all the juice goes into that place of a lung building and then it's dispersed to all the trailers, they're working on the filming, there's a big hole sticking there. So, I don't know if they got a building permit for the building. Yeah.
Yeah, what I did was I asked Lynn to find, to, to tell the inspectors to give me a list of everything that is a violation that needs to be corrected, and she followed through on that and what we got was the, only the electrical inspector, inspectors.
One didn't get back to you?
I don't believe there was anything from wrong, all I got was.
National grid doesn't have any jurisdiction there.
I'm sorry?
National grid doesn't have any jurisdiction there, electricity is not being delivered safely, I, Frank, I have no clue.
Stops the meter.
Yeah, I really don't know.
I think there's one meter for all that trailers.
What?
Oh, man. So electricity's included in the grid, I'm surprised.
So, is the town, I mean, that place is like an accident getting ready to happen, is the town gonna be liable if something happens over that?
Frank, I, let me just say this, Bob, like, the answer is, I would claim that we are not liable, however, you're picking me in the right direction, these obviously people train students against the town.
I had no idea there was only one meter feeding that entire park.
Well, it's not concluded, we haven't included that, but it looks, I mean, maybe he's including electricity with his rent.
Well, that's where I, that's where I.
I don't know.
They must, if, if there's only one meter. So can I ask this, um, what you did in the last couple of weeks, you said was an official, you took a position of a notice of violation, which is a step in the direction of, and then that prompted conversation with the attorney.
Well, no, actually, my.
Or no?
As I recall, I called the lawyer right after our meeting last night. I also looked at the, at the, say, positioning of, of, of the matter in terms of if we go to move on to a report, were we ready?
Okay.
And I felt that we needed to have a new, a new, uh, letter go out.
Do you have a copy of the man of God?
I have one.
I have it here.
But, yeah, uh, as I recall, he placed.
Say.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that the one that Jim just sent?
No, this is the one that, yes, Jim. I request a meeting with your electrician, please contact me. To that, I don't know whether there's a response. My guess, that was August twenty-four, my guess is that that was not responded to.
Right, but that's not when you just did it, you just did something the last couple of weeks, right?
That, that is, that resulted in this, correct.
Right.
I called him right after our meeting, we then, uh, sent out a request to all of the inspectors to say exactly what it was, what current violations there were, because the last letter we had on violations was two years old, or, excuse me, a year old, a year and a half old. I needed to know which ones were still violations, which weren't. That prompted this letter going out to Mr. Palmer from Jim McGovern, and, um, and so that's, that's the posture. But no, there has not been a response, I called the Gosian today to find out to whether they're, what they're doing, what I can report to the town council. So apparently, that means that they've done nothing since August twenty-four. So McGovern's asked for a meeting, there's been no response, uh, except for when I called him today. Thank you.
Is it, is it possible for us to take a position where we direct you to commence litigation within thirty days if no, you know, if no, and then you pass that on? If no, you know, if no, and then you pass that on, that's with the council. It's directed you, would that be it? It doesn't seem appropriate for you to go back and say, you better do something, because now, now we're gonna go to court. Because the council is not comfortable with the additions.
Perfectly legit position you take, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
In the interest of the safety of the residents of that park, that you directed to pursue litigation after thirty days, notifying the attorney that this has been our posture. So that makes, it's a rather lengthy motion. I guess I'm explaining my motion, sorry. Here's a second, my explanation under discussion, Dan, you call for discussion. Didn't you call for discussion? I just kept discussing. So under discussion. Don't shake it, you know what I mean. I'm just saying, you know what I'm saying. You can, you can make a word, Mike, you did a good job. And Jim understands what I'm saying. Right, under discussion, Jim, you'll convey this to the attorney and indicate the council is not pleased because of safety issue, which some of them have observed. Some of them don't want to return because they're afraid. I'm kidding, I don't put that in, I don't put that in. Don't put that in.
So we're gonna vote now, discussion's done?
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, next up, public meetings, live streaming and video conferences.
Yeah, we, the library was awarded, the grant money, the equipment was ordered. And I don't think that has come in yet. It'll be the same equipment that, I think Lynn, we asked James to order two sets. He ordered one, but we had to split it because one was grant funded, we have to show the receipts. So once the equipment in, we can try it out down at the library. It's gonna be a beautiful system, ninety inch TV, ninety-five inch TV with the video camera, the terminals to talk.
Well, so, so the question for me is that that similar system, that'd be something that can be implemented.
James, yeah, it would be. The only thing, we have the, the TV that we could place in, that's in a different location, obviously. But it would allow for a live stream.
Well, I think Lynn would probably like that, I'm not sure.
Screen coming home.
I'm just, I'm just kidding, I'm charging anybody. Well, I would say we continue, I think we should continue this another month and see. Give us a progress report if you can. That's my suggestion.
As soon as it starts up, we can go down and take a tour and see what it does.
And another thing too is, I mean, I appreciate the work it's doing on it, but I, I don't think that, I think the people need to come to the meeting like they did tonight. We have this system here, we've had problems, they're in COVID, people can't hear us talking. I know that this is a better system. I don't think we need to spend the seven grand. I don't think, it's the people's money. I mean, the taxes are high enough. I think the people should show up. I'm sorry, I understand there's another side of it, but I just don't think that we need to spend the seven grand. I mean, everything adds up, seven grand here, seven grand there, seven hundred here, five hundred here. We don't need it.
Was a grant for programming from the state technology.
I know, fifty-fifty, state's still our tax money, you know.
Yeah, but federal.
Federal's still our tax money. Spread out a little more, but if you keep saying yes and you keep digging ourselves a hole, you know.
Okay, the next one, Department Environmental Management's response to letter from council regarding those violations in town garage. That was worded wrong, I'm gonna let Jim answer this one, so.
Yeah, I can bring you up to date briefly. Town council asked me to get involved in this matter last month. I did so. I did contact Department Environmental Management after a meeting with them. It was written, a written communication, and I have not yet heard back from them. But my position is we're gonna know the beyond that. Once I get set, so we have this put down, executive session at the next day. Hopefully I'll have some response to the matter, but.
All right, July communication number nine, proposal for this golf course out of town property.
After our last meeting, I went and talked to the library director and he was all for bringing it down to the library as an opportunity for adult program. I talked to Steve. Steve was all for, I said, a better location and those proposal with the baseball field. And then I brought it in front of the library board who also thought approved the concept and researched it. So now I contacted Eric, I'm gonna say his last name.
Did Jim let him see it the last two times?
Right.
Eric, yes. So I contacted Eric and we're gonna have to set up a meeting between Steve, myself, the council liaison, Ken, the director, and his designer, his course designer. But that'll be a few weeks, city has seven weddings to go to this summer, so he's very busy.
Who lays the, 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 the spell, who wants the disc?
Well, thanks for doing all the, all that work, you do a lot of work behind the scenes and even though I might not agree with spending the money for that either, I do sincerely appreciate you doing that work.
Well, you don't have to now, because he came to the town council, went for a poll, went and asked nine thousand, right?
It was another something, yeah, seven grand, eight grand.
So is it sale on this agenda?
I don't really think so, I can just, we can update through the library liaison report or my report or if something comes up.
Take that off of there, right?
Right.
Motion to take item F off the agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Dan, before you move to the next section, going back to B, just a point of information. We said continue B, but you're, you're changing, not change the language, Lynn, to take out the staggered terms piece? Is that, because we, not, not exactly the way it's worded here. You'll just reword it and only address the financials, I'll be, correct? Okay.
And this one, we were to, status, Department Environmental, environmental management's violations. Notice the violation in that town garage. And E? Will we word it?
Next up, number eleven, reports of officers, boards and committees, town council assistance report.
Well, the main one I want to talk about would be the Economic Development Task Force. It's two projects carry those great apps supplying them with the business labels and information to create a business friendly page. These are exit businesses by here, but by looking at names and the titles on the business list, it's very difficult. So they have that, I don't know if they can do it. The second part was, you know, I stepped in and out there with the grant that they received and it was a very difficult discussion. We put it up a bid twice, there was no responses to it. The property, there's all sorts of rumors about what's going on with that property that we've created. So there was, it's, it makes it more convoluted. Plus, we're asking, I think, still for, you know, what we wrote the grant for, there were three distinct things we were looking for. And if I exceed what amount of money that would give it, you know, so.
The grant won't cover what you paid.
So now, at the meeting, the discussion goes out, you know, you have three areas, how do you narrow it down? You have fifty thousand dollars, which one do you want? You just don't know. Especially now they're aware of the comprehensive plan update, the RFP going out, that maybe they should, they'll be waiting, you were wet, I asked them, what the council, what if, because I think they did, that the money somehow gets incorporated into the RFP for a site specific part in the comp plan. The doctor doesn't give you much, not what they want. So hopefully the state will allow a timeframe.
Okay, B, solicitors report.
Already addressed, the most important matters really already in the other parts of the agenda. I have no need to discuss any of our current litigation. I just would say, if anyone has any questions, that's all, just give me a call. I could fill you in on any questions I have concerning those cases. With regard to B for executive session, if the council wishes, I can bring an update on that. And E as well.
Yeah, because there've been a couple of people here, at least, that are here for that, so they sat the whole time. It would probably be good.
But it's under executive session.
It's under the executive session.
Only, only there, not now, E too, correct?
I can say this, outside of the executive session, just so that you're not completely in the dark. I know that the DPW director has had people go out against statements. And there's one more that we were waiting, as I recall, before other steps can be taken, but that, we're hopefully, hopefully that's planned. Indenely, right, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's about all I really can say. And the same thing I'm gonna tell town council in the executive session, so I guess I just, I just took care of those. And if anybody, again, has any other questions, please feel free to give me a call. If any neighbor has any questions concerning a particular issue, my phone is always available, please.
I, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I did get a text from one of the neighbors on, yesterday, the dogs are out again, I got pictures of them in one of the neighbor's yards and, you know. They're my dogs. Our dogs.
I'm glad to see you here.
Okay, well, and I apologize because we had to go to Portland, one of them took babysit my six-year-old grandson because their parents haven't had a vacation in six years, so we had planned this.
It's not on the agenda, so you're gonna give us a little bit of trouble to see if we'll be able to meet that.
We do encourage you to talk to your neighbors, though.
I, I would love to talk to my neighbors. When I tried to go to apologize, she called the state police and told me I couldn't, I couldn't trespass or I'd be arrested. When I tried to talk to them, she screamed at me yesterday quite a bit and really was quite nasty. They're not bad dogs, I wish you could meet them. He, he would kill you with kisses if anything. I guess she's been after, we have two, they're both rescues. One does not have a pancreas, which is unheard of, and that's why my husband had to go hang because he gets two different insulin and has to be fed, so that if the other one has a heart murmur. The other guy that had to leave was the trainer that we've worked with and we want to continue to work with. We put up a four-foot fence that the male figured out how to jump over, so we just, sorry, tightened it, and I have a proposal here from our new fencing guy who's going to put in a six-foot fence.
Maybe you could give it to the town clerk so we don't get in trouble with the open meetings act. It's not on the agenda for discussion right now, as he said.
I'm willing to do whatever it takes.
Maybe you could give it to the town clerk and then we can get it dispersed.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Your name? Marcia Serfroth. I'm sorry, I don't know how this works.
No, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
I, I just wanna say to the whole audience, I did try to go across to the neighbors a number of times, as my wife said. Could you put that in a document and give it to Lynn, please? Just so that we don't get, sincerely, we don't want to get, we don't want to get any troubles, it's not on the agenda, so we really not supposed to.
We didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, it's difficult to understand, so, thank you.
We apologize.
No, it's okay.
Are you the neighbor?
I am, and just to, just to bring it out, I have lost my livestock and they were there on Labor Day again, right on the coop at the door. We were lucky, we didn't lose our birds because we didn't let them out earlier in the day. So, you know, at some point you have to realize what you're, how you're impacting our lives with your dogs. I have a three-year-old disabled child and a four-year-old, and they do play with the chickens. And it took only seconds for them to kill a quarter of my, my flock, so.
I thought it was first seven and then you said it was one.
Four, out of sixteen. I now have eleven birds, so, you know.
I think we spoke in the woods.
Yes, we did. We did, and I said I was tired, I was tired.
But I offered to compensate you somehow?
You spend months working on these, with these birds. It's not like you show up with another bird, I'm sorry.
You told your dogs. Talk, communicate with each other. Get a cup of coffee.
Can we just slide and talk so we?
Pair each other up.
All right.
I've had so much patience.
You have, you, nothing but scream at me, and your wife, I guess.
So, so how many years have we been doing this? How many years? Two years, over two years.
Ma'am, we gotta continue.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Next up is reports removed from the data. First one was public work, see, do you want that removed?
Yeah, the information I put forward to you, because of my report from the last, this last month, we did the demonstration phase for the machine, the backhoe, we're replacing. So we demoed four different pieces of equipment. All four of these pieces of equipment are nationally bid items. Going out the public bid is not a necessity, it's actually detrimental to the taxpayers, and I can explain that. The process, the system. So when these vendors hand in these reports, these pieces of paper, that is the public bid nationally for that piece of equipment with trade value as well as any options we wanted to add to. And then you get a total number, just like you would in a regular sealed bid that we would do in-house. The benefit to doing the saucewell system, which is again nationally pre-bid, the taxpayers save approximately three thousand dollars, mostly in employee time, advertising, and any pencil paper and everything you want to add at it. That's what the taxpayers save, because we don't have to go out to bid, we don't have to wait three months, we don't have to do the research, we just demo the machines like we always would. They hand in, they, it's a, again, pre-bid national. So we always get a better price nationally than we would a local price on an individual item, as well as saving the money of not having to go out to bid. Now, we've done this for four other items in the past few years, saving the taxpayers approximately twelve thousand dollars. So Dell's papers in front of you, there's four machines there that are bid out. Two I would not recommend, that is not suitable for our department and the work we do. There are two I would recommend, but only one falls within my price range in my budget. And that's the Caterpillar backhoe at one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I would like to have the John Deere backhoe as well, but it's ninety-five hundred dollars more and that's over my budget by about six thousand dollars. But the Caterpillar is an excellent machine, it's used by every contractor, heavy contractor in the state. And it's, actually it is the biggest, most powerful machine of the four listed with the best trade value. They give us twenty-three thousand trade value. So that's, again, the system is saucewell, but it's nationally pre-bid. We, we are members for free, and that's how we save the money in-house. So I don't have, the public already approved the funds, is what I'm trying to get at. It's not a council, I want to bring this to the council, I want everybody aware of how this system works. So I know we've used it in the past, previous councils, and has not been a problem.
What did we use the system for?
Salt shed, hay loader, the diesel zero turn. What else we used it for? But we did for most of the large purchases in the last few years other than trucks, because trucks are very specific and they're not easily done through saucewell because of the types of equipment we add to them. So mostly it's the equipment that's done this way.
Well. Well, the charter is a public service. Put that to your ear.
Yeah.
You can speak, man.
It's totally legal because it's totally legal, just like writing a statement.
One item there in that.
I mean, I could look at it.
I remember the charter has some specific.
There's procurement information in the charter, but that's, the only special language there would be the sole source purchasing, which would be a one-of-a-kind item. That's not this.
I'm not gonna sit here and accept, we got four bids. It's probably gonna be the four people, four quotes. These aren't bids.
They are actually legal Saucewell quoted bids.
Budget quotation, open cap, quotation.
But it's listed under the Saucewell, and again, because it's under Saucewell, that is the nationally bid price.
It's a nationally shared price, but is it Rhode Island state law and the Exeter Town Charter I'm concerned about? I mean.
Well, there's thousands of municipalities across the country, including the state, that use this system, and we have ourself on numerous occasions.
I'm not gonna approve spending this type of money without going out to bid or having a look at it, so there's no way.
I'm just gonna, you're just gonna cost the taxpayers money, and you might only answer to that now, at this point.
Is it entitled?
Oh, no, time means nothing.
So, if he looks at the language of the law.
I have no problem looking at it for six years.
Maybe we can do it that way, because it sounds like a good deal, but we just don't wanna do something that's not legal. I think that's what he's saying. He wants to make sure. He should be sure, but he's not, so he needs to be sure.
Again, it's nationally, it's a national thing.
I'm gonna refer this to Jim, just to make this out. Okay. We'll do that. Did you have anything else on there?
Not, not on that, no.
So, you're good with your report? Calvin, you've had social services.
I did wanna speak to that. Before we move, Steve, or Evan, I just wanna know, for my own, obviously, Dan has questions. My question is, are there other municipalities here in the state that go this route?
Yes.
I mean, is this in this part of your organization that you discuss?
No, we've been members for years. We, again, we've used them for three, over the last three years.
And other communities do as well.
Oh, yes.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, Mike, the only reason I wanted to pull the report from the Department of Social Services because I was talking to Jessica today, and she prepared this, and we talked about parts of it. But I just wanted to say that Meals Wheels is a service that is being offered now and it's being offered to the Southern Rhode Island Volunteers Association, and there are some Exeter residents that are benefiting, but volunteers for delivery are still needed. Now, there's somebody here to listen, but someone will, someone will be listening to the recording here tonight. I just talked to a friend who does it elsewhere, and it's just, it's a very rewarding opportunity for people to get involved and help childrens. But also, the other issue that I just want you all to know is that Jessica, again, taking more initiatives, she's really quite remarkable, and the town seems to be benefiting in many ways. And she orchestrated a collection of school supplies, and she told me today that she distributed them, I think, a couple of weeks ago. It says here, August 27th, she was able to disperse supplies that had been collected as well as additional supplies from funds that were donated. Within thirty minutes, she had provided supplies for over sixty children, completely ran out of available supplies. And she writes to us, shows me that while we may not always see it, there are children here in Exeter who are needed. So, she says next year she'll make a greater effort to collect supplies. After the event, she says she was able to help several other families with clear need to obtain supplies. And what she mentioned was that there were gift cards that were provided by Salvation Army for shoes for needy children, and these was part of the sixty families that were assisted through the office. She's doing a nice job.
If somebody in the town would like to donate money to this department, how do they do that? They write a check to Exeter Department of Social Services?
Town of Exeter.
Town of Exeter?
I did, right, Maria?
Yes, yep.
And she, and then she makes a note of that, that donations are made to assist with kids that are needy. I had a discussion with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, mentioned this initiative, and he assured me there are a number, quite a few families here in town that have needs that she was helped to fulfill. She was a little bit more explicit, but I'm not gonna share all those details with you, but she's good.
They were written to town, excuse me?
Yes.
They were written to town, Exeter Department of Social Services, under check?
Yeah.
So, they're comfortable not writing into the Town of Exeter?
Sure, Town of Exeter, I would just put social services on the memo, Department of Social Services. I can give a receipt if they want it to be tax deductible, if they don't care about that. It just goes right back into her supplies account, so she can do more. If it's very specific, then it can be very specific to a certain, if it just could be for school supplies or, you know, whatever, whatever the donor wants.
Yeah, and I just wanna say, because in recent months, several people have said to me, it's a shame Exeter doesn't have a food bank. And so, once again, for those of you here, for anyone listening, we do have a food bank. She operates it, and she mentions here that local farms, our kid's farm, Colleen's farm, and Emma Aker's are supplying food for events that she's sponsoring, and they're being distributed to the Exeter Food Bank out of the Exeter Chapel. So, it's there, it's working, people are taking advantage of it. I just think people need to know that. So, everybody, remember, it's happening.
It's not all up to the town. It's up to the people of the town. If they wanna help, you can help yourself. You don't have to have the town help. You can also help directly.
You build a fund, your comments, Cal? I have tried no less than four times to try and set something up with Meals on Wheels. And unfortunately, despite through Jessica's efforts and my efforts, they have a tangled weave of bureaucracy that does not allow people to individually go there and get meals and help disperse them to individuals in town. You have to go through the Southern.
Right now, right.
Right now, right, exactly. So, based on what Mike said, I think that's the best suggestion that we can give anybody is just give the money directly to Jessica, and that way Jessica, and she can make the decision of where those funds can go, so that way it doesn't get tied up in bureaucracy. I don't, I thought about application with Meals on Wheels. My mother helped them for years, which gave me the reason why I wanted to get involved, but I found it was a particular resident in town that was confined because they had, they had brain issues, and Meals on Wheels will only deal with other organizations than dealing with just individuals. And when my mother did it, you would go.
And pick up.
And pick up meals, and you would deliver meals to homes very similar to the way a child would get a hot meal at lunch during the day. They don't do that anymore. Now, you have to go pick up like four or five frozen meals and give the frozen meals to the recipient, and then the burden is upon the recipient or somebody else in the family member to heat up the meal. So, the social interaction with the individual who needs that meal doesn't get that social interaction time. So, if we can suggest to people that they deal directly with Jessica and her department, I think that's where the funds and the energy would be best used, so.
Because she's very good and very active.
She is.
And she cares. She's gonna do proper, she's gonna handle it properly.
Yep, yep. I think she wants to come in over the next couple of months to give more of a conclusive report to the council of what her efforts have done, and I think we should try and make her feel welcome to do that. So, that way, you know, she can tell us directly what she does instead of you saying it, or Calvin saying it, or me saying.
It's written for the show. The report does help, doesn't it?
Well, that's what I wanted to share. When we talked today, I said, make sure you leave us a copy, because I wanna speak to it.
Yep, I'm glad you did.
Yeah, thank you.
I've had a note that she wants to come into a work session, so I was gonna ask Dan if he wants to put it on on the 27th.
Twenty.
Okay, are we good with social services?
Yes.
Transfer station. So, it didn't make it on the agenda with regards to the stickers and everything, which everybody's gonna be aware of because obviously we're gonna have signage at the dump and so on and so forth. Has a decision been made as to whether or not we're gonna increase the cost of the dump sticker? Or we're not gonna increase the cost of the dump sticker?
Right now, it'll stay the same.
We've been talking about this for years, and I'm kinda, you know, it's a perennial problem. It's a perennial issue. I don't know what West Greenwich is doing, better than us, worse than us. We do know that they heavily subsidize their program. I know the tug comes in that if you subsidize it, then everybody's paying for it, not necessarily the people that are using the dump, all right? But I think the cost of the dump is too high, all right? And they may not go up this year, but I would like to take a strong look at the way West Greenwich does it. And maybe there's things that we can mirror, that we can, that we can do that they do. It just seems to be too much of a disparity between the two towns, despite the fact that we have similarities in the two towns. And now that we're gonna be owning the land, and they own the land, I just don't see where it boils down to, why did programs so different than ours?
They subsidize it, no?
Yeah, well, we know that. We know we subsidize that, all right? And that may not be an issue now, right? But as soon as we go up on that dump sticker, which is gonna happen sooner or later because of, because of, you know, whatever the tipping is, okay? Whether it goes up five dollars or fifty dollars, all right? I think you're gonna, sooner or later, people are gonna say, no, that's enough.
But they gotta pay for it if they're gonna use it. If it was 170 per person to use it, then they need to pay 170. Why should the town subsidize? We've got people like Cal paying for their private trash removal. Why should they have to pay for both? I mean, he's already paying for the school.
Well, you know what? We can't have, we can't have an honest discussion with it unless we list everything that we do and everything that our surrounding, the other town does, and look and say, we agree with that, we don't agree with that, we agree with this, vice versa. I don't think that we've compared the two of them.
We got that good report that he gave, I think Ken is the one who gave it, I think we, I don't know when we got it, but we looked at that last month. We have it. We looked at it. That was good. Had all, you saw that. Had all the comparisons of done in years past and different ideas. I think there should be no subsidy. We should, this, whatever goes, there's no profit being made over there. Whatever it costs, we divide it amongst the members. It's as simple. That's how I feel. Why should the town pay for it? I know it's not cheap, but nothing's cheap. It goes up. 170, it's on 50 now. 170 years is not the end of the world. 170 per year, it's not the end of the world. That's not that bad. Private trash pickup is more than double or maybe even triple that.
Well, maybe so. I think, I think if it ever does go up, you're gonna start seeing more refuse on the side of the road.
You know, we're never gonna get away from that, unfortunately. It's terrible, but it's another issue. We're intertwined, we're intertwining different things, but I respect what you're saying. I just think that the thing should be self-sufficient.
Want to add something, Steve?
Well, I do. Right now, we run what's called a pay-as-you-throw system. That means it's a user-based system. The users of the facility pay for the cost of the facility. The town of West Greenwich runs a public subsidized with tax money system. They run the same operations. It's just they're using taxpayers' money from their entire community to fund it, and only a small user fee, which is their sticker fee, which basically doesn't even cover their home, never mind their tippage or anything else, that they're only covering a little bit with a user fee. So, they're just basically, they have a taxpayer-based system. Every taxpayer in the town of West Greenwich pays for their transfer station, and only people that buy stickers get to use it. I don't think that's personally fair. I'd like the pay-as-you-throw system. I think it's fair to everybody because the people that use it pay for it. That's what we run currently. We always have run basically a pay-as-you-throw system.
And it wasn't always that way. It used to be West Greenwich was more money than we were years back.
We had a landfill.
Because I remember there was a guy I knew who said he had an Exeter permit. He lived in West Greenwich because it was less expensive. I said, you don't live here. You can't use this. And he found a way. He snuck it somehow.
It wasn't that difficult back then.
Because it was less expensive than buying the West Greenwich permit.
We should go here for, well, if anyone's listening, the system has been improved since, correct, Steve?
Oh, yes. We've made changes.
And Steve, I have a question. I didn't think this, this is on the, we added this to the agenda?
We get into reports.
Oh, reports, got it, got it. All right, so under reports, can I just ask you of those options that we addressed some, several years ago? The one you've spoken of before is doing our own in-house operation with hauls. Just let me say, you may not know the answer to this. Do you think that could reduce at all cost? Maybe not. I'm just, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
All right, rough number using current staff, if you had your own truck to haul the boxes we already own, you would save approximately $30,000 the first year, but you would have to lease your truck to do that for over five years. You can't afford the truck outright and save money. But you can cut the cost about what went up this year in cost, which we are gonna be subsidizing.
Because of increase.
Increases from the state and quality increase. But no, we could save that money. I've said this, we've tried this five times in the past, and I've been shot down five times. We'd have saved the taxpayers over a million dollars by now if we'd have done that 25 years ago.
Well, years ago, I didn't think you could do anything about capping the landfill, and I guess why.
It's a 27-mile round-trip drive. It's not that difficult.
I know, thank you. I just needed to ask. And another question. When we get rid of the fee, the rental, the monthly fee, that's not gonna save us. What's that about?
$12,000.
What, please?
$12,000 change.
A little bit.
It'll cover the cost increase coming in January. A little.
One wipes out the other, to speak.
Now, I guess what we could do, Frank, is do a little bit of research. Do they have all their information on their webpage, West Greenwich?
I think they have some of it, and I think that they have a little bit of a different setup with regards to their. I mean, I know, I know now we don't pay to get rid of mattresses, right?
That's correct. We have a program with the state, zero.
Whereas before, it was like 25 dollars.
Unless it deemed unrecoverable, and then there's a $50 per piece charge.
Right.
And we have a big, a book that comes down from the state, the pitch, basically a pitchbook for the guys that work it. If it's this, it's zero. If it's this, you have to pay. Every time it's, we're gonna have to pay for that, they take them and probably throw them on West Greenwich, so.
So, I know there was an issue with some of the residents with regards to throwing something away and paying for it versus bringing it down to Exeter Scrap and getting, you know, dropping it off for the scrap price instead. Obviously, you know, if you can have the pickup truck and the means to get it down there, who wouldn't wanna get rid of a washing machine and get paid 10 bucks instead of paying 25 to get rid of it outright, right? So, I know there's a little bit of an issue there with regards to recyclables, or like Steve said, and he's gonna, I mean, obviously, nobody can reuse tires or batteries and that type of thing, you know, but.
We could put a little notation on the list of, a menu for the dump and say, there's also private, if, you know, if you can't afford these fees, there's also private companies that may pay you for certain things. You might wanna look at that. You could put like a little sentence in there.
That's all part of the funding stream for the operation. People pay to. People pay to drop propane tanks off, people pay to drop tires, batteries, and bulky items. And that, bulky items even being metal, it's listed out as washes, refrigerators, microwaves, hard-to-dispose of items. Back when we were landfilling everything, we didn't scrap, we didn't send items. Now the state forces us to divert items. Scrap was one of the first things we diverted, because it's the heaviest. Obviously, we're diverting mattresses, we're diverting e-waste, we're diverting propane tanks, the batteries, the tires, books, shoes, and.
A lot of it depends on the market, too, you know? I mean, look at the price of aluminum today. It went up, and it's probably the highest it's been in ten years, right? So you're probably not gonna see much aluminum show over that down there, because people are gonna scrap instead, so. Depends on the item.
Are our fees covering our costs? Or are they, oh, so those fees for dropping a mattress doesn't cover the cost? If I drop off a mattress and I pay, what is it, ten dollars?
It's zero if it's a good mattress, recoverable, what's called a recyclable mattress.
If it's all broken.
Just mattress first.
Okay.
If a mattress is all broken, it's gonna cost fifty dollars to drop. We have to put them in a separate box, so that when the hauler goes to dump them, they flip them off in a different pile, and we have to pay the central landfill the fifty dollars. So we make zero profit.
Those fees, we make no profit on those fees.
Not on mattresses.
On other things?
On the bulky waste, like a couch or a chair, that's increased, it takes up a lot of space in our box, reduces our tonnage a lot. And well, it's, it's, it just costs us money, because you're hauling more boxes. That's why that fee.
So we and you have it figured out, there's no, there's no, there's no like, there's not, there's no padding in here? It's what it costs us to get rid of these items, yes?
The only thing, if you want to call it padding, would be the scrap. Because that used to be a bulky item that went to a landfill, now we're recycling it.
Scrap metal?
Scrap metal. Problem is, we're not making a lot of money on scrap metal. It's just a convenience for the taxpayers, and they fill two dumpsters every week almost. So people don't want to go to the scrap dump, for whatever reason.
Are those, those aren't some of the items that are on the side of the road, are they?
Very few metal items, we don't pick up a ton.
We should leave that one alone.
We'll pick up batteries now and again, which makes no sense, because they usually will reimburse you with the water box. We do pick up tires. Every time we found a large trash deposit, and there was any name in it, it was from out of town. North Kingston, Richmond, Charleston, and even the city.
Wow.
We've never found trash dumped in this town that Exeter affiliate.
Yeah. Was always around.
We're always getting it from.
We find places in town, but it's state land.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we'll do some research.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, let's see, other administrative issues.
Well, just, yeah, I just, I just have one, I have one question that I was looking at some, and it's basically, it's a question I'd just like to ask Jim if I could. Jim, we know, we've gotten notice of.
Hey, I give. I'm gonna try it.
We've gotten notice of a meeting that's gonna happen here with the. Between the zoning officer, and we were all noticed about that. And I don't, and we were all noticed, but it doesn't, I don't, it's the zoning officer and the folks from the.
Yeah, I got a copy of that, too. As far as I can tell, the zoning officer wishes to meet at any decision he wants to have.
Should people be part of that, or do you?
I got a copy as well, and I don't read it as being a invitation for me necessarily.
No, it was just.
It was a courtesy, I think.
Well, that's what I thought, but isn't, well, I just wonder. It's happening, right? Well, I think someone, I mean, should we, well, I'm not asking you, should we, but do you think people should sit and observe that kind of thing, some of us, or anything, or? I don't know. I did read.
Certainly, I think, as a council person, you certainly have the ability, I think, to tell the zoning officer you'd like to. The problem would come in is if more than a quorum should attend, then we have a public meeting and all that stuff, so. But if you have a heightened, you know.
Although I wasn't planning on it, but I.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, but, you know, the zoning officer is trying to hash out some, some questions the zoning officer asked. It is, it is fair.
The zoning, the zoning is all right. I'm like, repeatable.
Correct, and I would.
And I understand that, Joe.
It's okay, good. Okay, let's see. Communication, Cal, you had number one?
I did. Oh, you did. I just wanted to read this, because if there's any farmers out here, they might want to know this. Stacy Intel is the new program manager for the Rhode Island Agricultural Mediation Program, R.I.A.M.P. And the official USDA certified program for our state offers free confidential assistance to help resolve agriculture-related issues in a productive environment. We can help farmers to resolve disputes about contracts, land use, agricultural loans, succession plans, and more. The goal is to help farmers resolve disputes creatively with less time and less cost than traditional methods. The program is a bit of a secret, and it shouldn't be. What issues can be mediated are USDA farm and conservation programs, farm loans, USDA rural development loans, farm credit debit, crop, I'm sorry, farm credit debt issues, leases, land and equipment, pesticide issues, family farm transitions, wetlands determination, et cetera, et cetera. I just wanted to, crop insurance, easement issues. So they offer free help, confidential assistance to farmers. And how do you contact them? You can contact them at their website, AGmediationRI. Again, that's AGmediationRI at gmail dot com, or you can call them at four zero one two seven three nine 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 nine. It's two seven three nine 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 nine. Thank you.
Next is number nine, which we covered, that was the seventh. Number eleven, I think that was it.
No.
Correspondence number eleven, eleven.
Well, I'm honored.
Yeah, so Mike, you're gonna attend that, right?
Yes, I'm gonna try, yes. Well, tomorrow, tomorrow at one P M?
Saturday.
Saturday night?
Saturday, alright.
Nine eleven.
Hang on, let me talk with that, yes, yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's it.
That's sad, you do?
We don't have any reason to go into executive session, unless you, does anybody have a reason to go into executive session?
No.
Okay. So that brings us to the very end. Provisions required.
So who?
Second. Got a ten o'clock on the nose.
That's my exact.
It's Monday, it's July 2nd.
Uh, it was in the boardroom, I'm thinking that somebody was sitting behind the.
I don't know.
I just didn't know who was sitting behind the. I don't know how many ways I can say, control your dog, that's all, that's all.
That's what I, that's what I'm going to increase the fence height and size and block some gates.
I didn't, I didn't.